Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 8th meeting of the City of Worcester Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Burke-Powers and I will chair tonight's meeting. This meeting of this Worcester Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in a hybrid manner with both in-person and remote participation. As a preliminary matter to tonight's meeting, I would like to confirm board members and staff who are present. Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Board member Abramoff?
Affirmative.
Board member Campanello?
Here.
Board member Cortez?
Here.
Board member Torcono?
Yeah.
Board member Sacco?
Here.
Oh, sorry. David Horn?
Present.
Michelle Smith?
Present.
Amy Beth?
Present.
All right. Before we start, a few housekeeping notes. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed from the City of Worcester website and the recording will be available for rebroadcast. This is a public meeting, which means both that it is being recorded and that minutes will be taken and published at a later date. The public may participate remotely by calling 1-669-254-5252. That number again is 1-669-254-5252. Access code 1-604564634, pound sign. Again, that number for the access code is 1-604564634, number sign of pound sign, or using the link shown on the screen. Once an item is called, there will be a brief presentation of the item, followed by any additional comments and clarifications from member of the city staff. Then, an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on that item. Before we proceed to bore discussion and action, to manage remote participation during our hybrid meetings and prevent disruptions, all participants are automatically blocked from unmuting themselves, turning on their video, or sending chat messages. For remote participants who would like to comment on an item on our agenda, we ask that you use the raise the hand feature in Zoom during the discussion on that item. If you are joined by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Again, that is star nine to raise your hand. Staff will then call on members of the public one at a time and give them permission to unmute themselves. If you are joined by phone, you will then be able to unmute yourself by pressing star six. So again, to unmute yourself, that will be star six. Please note that the board appreciates brevity in your comments. That is true both online and in person. Staff will then call on members of the public, I will call on members of the public one at a time, and give them permission to unmute themselves. Oh, staff will then give them, oh, sorry, I'm calling myself. To help with the process, we will ask participants speaking in person to use a microphone to please clearly identify yourselves each time you speak. In the first time you speak, please state your city of town of residence for the record. To help maintain an orderly meeting, please address all comments and questions through the chair, that is me, rather than directly to any of the speakers or applicants. Applicants should be aware that approvals are generally conditional. Decisions are typically signed by the board at the next meeting and filed with the city clerk the following day, beginning the appeal period. It is the applicant's responsibility to address any conditions of approval and lack of doing so may result in delays or enforcement. Please contact the planning division with any questions. Any party aggrieved by a decision of the board has the right of appeal under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17, excuse me. That's Chapter 40A, Section 17. There are a number of items on our agenda being continued or postponed tonight, which I will read through shortly. If you are here on one of those items, please note that no additional notice will be sent to you before the next meeting. The best thing to do is to call the planning division the day prior to our next meeting to confirm if the item will be heard or postponed that night. It is not uncommon for items to be postponed multiple times before they are heard by this board. I will suggest for the purposes of streamlining our meeting that board member Campanello offer to make any motions and that board member Cortez second any such motions. In the event either member prefers not to do so, or in this case, we have some having to step out, I simply ask that you identify another member to do so. Okay? We have fewer items for postponements. So, item number four and number five, 26 Milton Street and 28 Milton Street. There is a request to postpone the public hearing to December 29th, 2025, and extend the constructive deadline to January 13th, 2026. And again, that's 26 Milton and 28 Milton. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone item four, 26 Milton Street, and item five, 28 Milton Street.
Is there a second?
Should move.
On the motion, board member Abramoff?
My vote is yes.
Board member Campanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. So if you're here for 26 or 28 Milton Street, please talk to the planning division and they will let you know when that meeting will be heard. All right. And with that, if the applicant for 17 Montclair Drive would like to come forward and make a presentation. Can you make sure that the green light is on? I don't think.
Good evening, everybody.
State your name and city of residence.
My name is Jeffrey Miller and I represent Adnan in Spresa, Palosia of 17 Montclair Drive in Worcester. We're here tonight seeking conditional approval for permit. This is a two, it's about a 2,000 square foot, single-family home residing on this plot of land purchased in 2020 by the couple here today. Mr. Palosia came to the town hall, he was seeking, he wanted to know if he needed a permit to have some fill put in his land. He was uninformed because he went to the wrong permit department and maybe he failed to notify them that he was actually putting it on a slope, which does require a permit. So without ill will or ill intent, he had some fill delivered to his property in about February, March of 2023. He was then, the issue was brought to his attention that he needed a permit for this. There was a cease and desist order, which he followed, and he has followed to this day. Since then, I believe he was notified in May of the cease and desist. In the following month of 2023, he hired an engineering company to address this issue and do the proper permit application. It wasn't until October that he received a set of plans. They didn't have a stamp on it, there were a number of items missing on the plan. He didn't receive the set of plans, which were submitted until January of 2024. At that point in time, he was advised that that company does not handle recommendations on slopes, what for. That same month, he did hire another engineering professional. That went until, let me see here, went until about May of 2024. With that engineer, we kept requesting continuances for the application. We received no plans from him. He was terminated in May of 2024. Mr. Palosia then hired another, in April of 2024, he hired another engineer. And all these engineers, they've been, you know, obviously they're paying for their services. This engineer was the engineer for quite some time. We came up to the next board meeting and the engineer requested a substantial amount of an additional payment to do any further work after a site visit and some recommendations. So, Mr. and Mrs. Palosia, they're on their fourth engineer. What we're proposing is that the soil that has been deposited at the property has been there now for quite some time. What he's seeking is to leave that there based upon the recommendations of a number of the engineers as to not disrupt the slope. As you may see in the pictures, that slope is, it's about halfway through the property is where the slope starts, and it's a majority of that street, all the backyards are on a very steep slope. In order to rectify the situation, he is seeking permission, conditional permission from the board based upon the memorandum and the recommendations of the zoning board of appeals, that he install what's called a GeoGrid over that particular area where the soil was dropped. There are some big rocks you may see in the slides, those rocks will be moved to the bottom. Mr. Palosia and Ms. Palosia, they have no issues with any of the recommendations by the board, and I can tell you on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Palosia, they're very remorseful that they didn't get a permit beforehand. They understand the process now, and they're respectfully requesting that the board grant conditional approval.
Thank you. City staff?
Thank you.
Sure. Through the chair, this is Michelle Smith in the city's planning division. The board members will recall now that it's been quite a bit of time since you originally heard this. Really, you can see in the series of photos that you have, both in the case file as well as some of the photos that are on the screen and attached as exhibits, that the slope has been eroding superficially over the last couple of years where the sort of dumped fill was put in place back in, I believe, 2023. So through the series of different recommendations from different engineers, different surveyors, different contractors, given the amount of time that's elapsed and the various recommendations we've seen, city staff feel that at this point, in order to move this forward and stabilize this, we've kind of got to come to a compromise. And so some of the things that the board had previously requested related to analytical data associated with tests for soils that were placed on the site, and specific information related to compaction as it relates to the slope, we're willing to overlook and no longer proceed with requiring with the additional requirements that we've set forth and the conditions of approval that are suggested on pages three and four of the staff comments and the most recent version of our memo, which was issued on December 1st. So you'll note that the most recent plan that is part of the materials that were submitted to the board was a plan that the applicant is not intending to proceed with. That plan is from November 10th, and so we are sort of overlooking that and bypassing that and deferring back to a plan that is dated June 10th. So I just want to make sure that the applicant, they're in agreement with that, their heads are nodding, and I know that their counsel provided that commentary, but just for the board's benefit, there's this newer plan, which we are essentially putting to the side and saying that that's not an effective measure for stabilization. So with the additional recommendations, we have, there's a variety of monitoring requirements that an engineer needs to provide essentially at the end of each growing season for the first two years to ensure that any remedial actions, once the slope has been reconstructed, if you will, that it is being monitored and staying intact. And that includes plans for irrigation. We also have a requirement for a detailed construction management and sequencing plan to be submitted for approval through staff. So that would be something that shows exactly how access is going to be provided to the site for the work to be conducted, which has not been provided to date. So if the applicant wants to comment on that, or the board wants to talk about that, you're welcome to do that, but right now, we have that as a condition that they would have to provide prior to March of this year. So we'd be looking for essentially all these additional revisions to the plan by March 1st of 2026, so this upcoming spring. So you still have a few months in the kind of winter months where really not ideal for reconstructing a slope where they can get those updates. And then we are requiring that they complete the improvements on the plans that are the final approved plans before the middle of June, excuse me, before the end of June, so July 1st, all of that work needs to be completed. Once that's complete, we're looking for an as-built plan to be provided, and then again, construction monitoring reports from that engineer over the next two years to help us ensure that that stays stable. And again, remedial actions are taken if necessary and deemed appropriate by the engineer, and those will be sent to staff. Staff will review those, and again, if staff finds anything that is necessary to correct, there'll be an option for that. So that's really where we've landed. I could go over all of the different comments that we'd previously had, but I don't want to belabor that, we have a long meeting this evening. I'm more than happy to clarify if the board has any particular questions, but I think that's the point at where we are. I will remind the board that there were public comments that were provided from residents that are included in the packet as well as in the various documents in the case file. So just as a reminder, I'm not sure if any of the residents are here tonight, but just wanted to clarify that. Again, special permit to allow the placement of fill retroactively here, those are the recommended conditions should the board move to a vote. Thank you.
Is anybody here for 17 Montclair Drive? If you're online, please use the raise your hand function so that the staff can let you unmute, as no one is rushing the frontier. Is anybody raising their hand? Okay. We'll move forward with board comment, and if anybody has additional comments at the time, they can go. Generally speaking, I think we're, I would like to see this move off of our agenda. I think the plan, just as long as the applicant is clear that you're going back to the June plan to have some stabilization, and that you need to give us a plan for how you're actually going to make that happen. I know that there's been some trouble with getting a contractor to be in there, but just making sure that that's in place. I'm ready to move forward on this based on the special permit and making sure that it's stabilized, and obviously, there's some work to be done, but it's been out there. Those are all my comments. Board member Abramoff?
Thank you. Through the chair. I'm a little confused on this. To Ms. Smith, is, are we requesting them to come back in March with an approved plan? Or are we saying we'll approve this recommendation, we'll approve it today, subject to having an approved plan in March?
That's correct. So the plan would be submitted to staff to verify, and then provided that it meets the requirements that we've outlined in the condition. So there's sort of a list of minimum things that we're looking to see, and depending on exactly what construction approach, there'll be different documents that we'll be looking for. So we are saying we would do that administratively, rather than have this be something that needs to be pushed to March to allow for that to be provided, since it's already been about two years. So the board could, if you choose, act on the approval this evening. Should you approve it, then we would be requiring the applicant to provide this additional information to staff to review, which is pretty typical of any site plan that would come in for the city. So we don't necessarily look for the means and methods of construction to be submitted during the site plan process, but prior to actual commencement of construction, staff would review through a construction management plan the appropriateness of exactly what's proposed, and if the contractor wasn't in agreement, then they could always come back and amend their approval. I wouldn't expect that to be the case typically. If there's a point of friction, it's something that gets worked through administratively. So that's what we're proposing, is not to bother the board with the specifics of the construction management plan, that staff would approve that.
So let me just see if I understand this. So you're recommending approvals subject to them coming to you in March or by March within a plan that staff finds acceptable?
Correct. They could submit that plan tomorrow, but the latest date that it needs to be submitted is March 1st. So that's their last opportunity to submit. If they don't do that, then they're in violation.
And the outlines of it, it's not that there's no plan, it's that it would be to implement that that we're seeing on the screen, correct?
With the details that are not necessarily been provided yet. Okay. Well, you know, two years is longest, or more than two years is, I think, way longer than any case I've heard in 12 years doing this. So I'd certainly like to see it go away, and I'm sure it weighs on the petitioner's minds every single day. But they created their own problem, so I think subject to the staff's recommendation, I could support this.
Board member Campanello?
Through the chair. I think given the staff recommendations, and also the follow-up of 24-month monitoring allows me to vote to approve this today, just seeing that it's already been two years of somewhat monitoring and making sure that it hasn't been getting worse and looking at all the options. So I know staff has worked with the applicant to come up with this plan and make sure that there's safeguards in the conditions, so I'll move forward with this.
Board member Cortez?
Through the chair. I'm aware that you have submitted a no plan adherent to the recommendations by the staff, and I did look at all of those recommendations, and I heard that you are amenable to that, you agree to those there, so I wouldn't have a problem. But I follow up on the same question Mr. Abramoff made is on the second, I just want to clarify, we have a plan now, and sometime later, the staff is talking about a plan, and I'm not sure if that is a plan per se, or you wanted to call it a plan, but I see it more as a monitoring, submission, a monitoring plan to see if everything was done here. Is that what it is, just in simple words?
Yeah, so there are two different types of plans, if you will. One is a monitoring plan, so their engineer would go out, visually inspect the slope, and identify any deficiencies and provide reports to us. So there's a plan for monitoring, and then in addition, there is a additional plan. This plan shows the slope will be stabilized, this is the type of measure we're using to stabilize it. The additional plan that we are requesting is something that shows where the truck will be parked, how the crane is going to be staged. It's very specific, so it depends on exactly how they approach that, so we're saying that can get deferred, and staff will review that to make sure that it meets these minimum standards.
That's clear to me. Thank you very much. I have no problem to move forward with it.
Thank you. Board member Torcono?
I'm good. Let's move forward.
Board member Sacco?
Agreed. Move forward. Ready to go.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion on 17 Montclair Drive?
Through the chair, I just want to clarify too, that for this particular item, I don't think you need it, but board member Sacco wasn't on the board, so isn't eligible to vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Should move.
On the motion to close, board member Abramoff?
My vote is yes.
Board member Campanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 17 Montclair Drive?
Excuse me, one second. I just want to confirm that this is, this item with Michelle was started before I came on the board. Am I still eligible? I can't remember.
Sure. Through the chair. So we had just gone back through our records as well, and you actually were here at the time the hearing was initially opened. So while the case was pending prior to your joining the board, the case wasn't actually open for discussion until after. So it was originally opened in March of 2025, is my recollection from the notes that we have. So that was the initial time that the item was discussed, and you were present at that initial hearing.
That's correct.
So. All right.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for 17 Montclair Drive for a special permit to allow placement of fill, earth, excavation, and including the recommendations from the staff on pages three and four of the memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, board member Abramoff?
My vote is yes.
Board member Campanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
And my vote's yes. Thank you very much. Just be a contact with the board.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Next up is item number two, Summer Hill Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Donald O'Neill. I'm a lawyer here in Worcester with an office at 688 Pleasant Street. Here this evening with Sherri Klein, who is the owner of the property at 37 Summer Hill Ave. What we are seeking is permission from the board to divide this property into two lots and to construct a new single-family dwelling on the additional lot created. This property is Zoned RL7. The minimum requirement for two-family or single-family semi-detached is 70 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet. We actually have 13,715 square feet and 112.83 feet of frontage. So she does have the option of adding on to the existing structure by right with no approval. The property also has enough area and frontage by special permit to construct special permit relief, no variance relief, for a triplex or for a three-family dwelling. So there's actually sufficient area available for all of those options. Well, what she's proposing to do here is to create a new lot, standalone lot, not attach the existing house. If we were attaching to the existing house, as indicated, it would, we could do it with a lot less land, but she lives in the house, the existing house on the right, she plans on continuing to live there, and she's looking to realize the opportunity to create an additional house on this property. And she may, in fact, it's a possibility that she may move into it, or she may stay put. But the relief that we're seeking, again, is to create two single-family house lots. For the existing house, we're proposing 7,000 square feet and 55 feet of frontage. For the new lot, we're proposing 57.82 feet of frontage, and just under 285 feet of relief would be required for the area requirement, which is 6,715. So it's very close, and this allows us basically to keep the two properties separate, which, again, there's ample room to do that. There's an existing curb cut on the property. We're proposing to continue, not to enlarge that anyway, but to divide it between the two properties. And also, we've had a, we're showing a bit of curbing at the street, and then a separation of six feet, basically three on each side of the property, as a divider between the two existing driveways, which will keep them separate, and this also brings it into compliance with the current driveway setback requirements. I do have, that I just got this evening, is a letter of support from...
Thank you.
Got a letter of support signed by 20 neighbors. By my count, there's 14 of them on Summer Hill Ave and some of the surrounding streets as well. I also have two or three neighbors here in support of this petition, and they'll have an opportunity to speak to you. But I did look at the recommendations from staff. We have no objection to the recommendations from staff, and I think, believe those are on page three. And also, there are three waivers that are listed on page four. I would request those waivers, and we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Shannon, see this?
Yes, yes. City staff?
Thank you so much through the chair. This is Amy Beth Leath from the planning division. 37 Summer Hill Ave, as described, is in the zoning district RL7, and presently on premise is a single-family detached dwelling, and the applicant is seeking to divide the parcel and construct a new single-family detached dwelling on the newly created lot. For the existing lot, the applicant is requesting a variance for relief of 10 feet from the 65-foot minimum frontage requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zone, and proposes 55 feet of frontage on Lot 1. And then for Lot number two, the proposed lot, they are seeking a variance for relief of 285 square feet from the 7,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in the RL7 zone, and the applicant is proposing 6,715 square feet of lot area on Lot 2. And then I do want to point out that there was an error in the staff memo, I'm going to correct that right now, in that for Lot 2, they are requesting a variance of relief for 7.18 feet, not 10 feet, 7.18 feet, from the 65-foot minimum frontage requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zone. from the 65-foot minimum frontage requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zone. And the applicant has proposed 57.82 feet of frontage on Lot 2. The applicant is proposing a three-bed, two-bath, single-family dwelling with a total of 1,663 square feet for the proposed house. The proposed architecture is similar in style and massing to other homes in the neighborhood. As described by the applicant, the existing property has a 30-foot wide driveway, which exceeds the 22-foot maximum width for a residential driveway. And the applicant is seeking to maintain the existing curb cut and then split the driveway into two, one to serve each dwelling. A small section of curbing and the requisite three-foot landscape buffer is proposed to split the driveways to comply with the landscaping front yard requirements. Our only comment was that there are no walkways depicted from the proposed dwelling out of the front or rear. So if any, if there are any proposed walkways, we would like to see those depicted on a plan. The applicant also described all of the by-right and special permit options availed to them as alternatives for development. The only one that was not mentioned was that they could construct an ADU that is 900 square feet or less by right. The proposed house has a 785-square-foot footprint and would meet the ADU requirements if the second story was eliminated. So if this is approved, a definitive frontage subdivision plan will have to be filed with the planning board to allow the lot division with insufficient frontage. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Can you confirm again the amendments to the variance?
Sure can. For Lot 2, the variance would be for relief of 7.18 feet from the 65-foot minimum.
Okay.
Okay. Is anyone here for 37 Summer Hill Avenue? Yes, please come forward. Just state your name and city of residence. City or town of residence.
Hi, Margot Murphy. I'm 50 Summer Hill Ave, across the street from her. We've been neighbors for over 28 years that I've been there. No problems. Fully support this.
Thank you. Anything else you want us to know? That could be it. We appreciate brevity. I just want to make sure you're heard. Thank you. Is anybody else here for 37 Summer Hill Avenue? Yes, please come forward. Just state your name and city or town of residence.
Good evening. My name's Dan McClellan. I live directly adjacent to Sherri Klein, to the property at 33. And I'm surprised she hasn't sold it earlier. I tell you the truth, this poor woman, she's widowed for how many years?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half years. She lives alone. It's like, yeah, it's money in the bank. I kept waiting for her to say, I'm going to build over there. When she came to me with the proposal, I said, I have no problem at all, you know? So it would, I'd have brand-new neighbors. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. Thank you. Is anybody else here for 37 Summer Hill Avenue? Yes, please just come forward and state your name or city or town or residence.
Alan Cussy, Worcester, Massachusetts. I live directly across the street. I own the house, I should say, I own the house directly across the street, okay? I grew up in that house, so I've been on that street for 71 years, okay? I've seen what that property was when I was a kid growing up versus what it is now, okay? And they squeezed in a house on the other side of her property, smaller than the 7,000 square feet back when my parents were alive, and I didn't have much to say at that time. But now that I own the property, I just feel that it's being detrimental to the neighborhood. You can be overcrowding, and by, you know, I don't understand why you have RL7 regulations, but you always give a variance on them, or for the most part, give a variance on those. It says that they're strictly enforced in your handbook, but apparently they're not, you know? And this is to prevent excessive density through inappropriate lot splitting, which this is basically becoming. So basically, by her putting the second lot there, that's going to be 11% smaller than it should be, and her lot is now going to be 15% shorter than it should be. Now, I also have a photo showing the driveway, and there is no way that you're going to fit those two driveways in that small area like she's talking with the six-foot variance in the center. It's impossible, which is now going to put the driveway directly across the street from my driveway. It's going to butt up against it. Also, coming down that hill, it's a blind corner, okay? Cars fly down that hill. They avoid Whitmarsh Ave and they come down Summer Hill Ave because it's a wider street, and it's not congested on the sides. Plus, you have to deal with the fire trucks like you're doing on Whitmarsh Ave, okay? And, I mean, I've got my grandson running out there, and the kids next door to her house are all playing in their yard. And it's just a matter of time if someone's going to get picked off on that street in that corner. It's a very bad corner right there. I mean, people come flying up from the package store down the bar on the street, and they blow through the stop sign in the corner, and they go up, and then when they come up Summer Hill Ave, they cut on that side of the street to go up it. And it's dangerous. It's dangerous, I'll tell you. I mean, I don't understand why, you know, we're taking all the green areas away from the city of Worcester. And it's not a good thing. It's not a good thing. I mean, I understand somebody might be having a situation where they need to sell because they need, you know, the capital. Okay, that's all fine and well, but not to the detriment of the neighborhood. And I feel that this is going to be to the detriment of the neighborhood. You can tell that to Red Fox that ran through her front yard the other day. But I just feel that this is the wrong thing that's happening. We're taking away land here, and it's also in that proposition is showing that the new driveway is going to be 11 feet wide, and I believe the city of Worcester states that they have to be 12 feet wide in your zoning. So they're cutting the foot down on that. They're cutting down 11% on the piece of property across the front. You know, they're definitely going to have to move that curb. There's no doubt, there's no doubt about it. And it's going to be directly across my driveway. There's no if, ands, buts about that. And that's, that's not how you build a house, when you're butted against San Jose's driveway, you know? And, you know, I mean, you know, it's just that... It's just frustrating for me to see this, you know, happen to this neighborhood, first of all. And it's just frustrating just to see the congestion that it's going to cause, because when they squeeze that house on the other side, and if you go look at it, it's tight. It's already tight over there, you know? And now to come in with another house on the other side, you're squeezing. You know, it's taking away from the integrity of the neighborhood. It really is, you know? And I'm just not satisfied with it, you know? Especially the driveway situation. That's going to be a real hassle in that corner where cars flying up and down that hill. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else here for 37 Summer Hill Avenue? Yes, please come forward. Sure, both of you or one of you, it's all up to you. Just state your name and city or town of residence.
Hi, I'm Sharla Murphy, and I also live at 50 Summer Hill Ave. I've moved in and out of the neighborhood. And I also live there with my 13-year-old son. We've lived there almost, in total, about 12 years out of his age. And I love the neighborhood. I think it's a great street to live on. We all have great neighbors as well. And I agree that, you know, it might be a little busy of a street at times, coming in with fire trucks and everything like that. But that section of the street is the widest of all of the streets, so there is a lot more room for cars if they needed to park on the side of the road, especially during winter season and things like that. So I don't feel that there's any inconvenience to anyone in the neighborhood that would need to park there if necessary, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Yep, please come forward. Thank you very much. Just city and town of residence, please, and your name.
My name is Susan Nest. I live at 40 Summer Hill Ave in Worcester. And I'm here to express my concerns about parking that this proposed construction would create. There is a three-decker diagonally across the street from the proposed home that already places at least three vehicles on the street. Also, my neighbor to the left owns three vehicles, one of which is usually parked on the street. I'm concerned that the construction of a three-bedroom house may increase the number of cars parked on the street, which will cause challenges, particularly when the winter parking bans are in effect and parking is only allowed on that side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead. Come on forward. Just state your name and city or town of residence.
My name is Patricia Monahan. I live in that three-decker that they're just talking about that is across the street. I've lived there for 40 years. We used to own the house. We recently sold it because we're getting too old to take care of it, but I still live there. There has never, ever been a problem with parking. Everybody has their own driveways. We have a driveway in ours. Four cars can fit in there, no problem whatsoever. Even when there's a parking van for the snow, there's still plenty parking over there. As far as the intersection that was being talked about, we did have accidents there. This was years ago, and it was because the city planted trees in front of the stop sign. Once that tree was cut down, there have been no more accidents. It's a wonderful neighborhood to live in, where the only three family, I live right beside of the Cussies, who, he does not live there. He owns it, but he does not live there. As far as the greenery, it's only going to enhance the place. I mean, I don't understand what's going on. It's a wonderful neighborhood. And any complaints that anybody has, I just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is, before we go back here in person, I just want to see if anybody is online for 37 Summer Hill Avenue. If you're online, if you could just use the raise your hand function or press star nine to raise your hand if you're here by phone. But I'd like to give a chance for those folks. Anybody? Okay. If you, if you're trying to raise your hand, please keep doing so. In the meantime, if you are here for 37 Somerville Avenue, please, Summer Hill Avenue, excuse me. I keep saying Somerville. I'm sorry. Summer Hill Avenue, Summer Hill Avenue, please speak forward. I apologize. Summer Hill Avenue. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
I'll be brief, but, you know, we are providing the required parking. Off-street parking is provided in compliance with the ordinance. And I think that the opposition fails to take into account the fact that it's a... You could do a two-family by right without your approval, and you would still have two units there, and you'd still have the same number of parking spaces. And the only thing that we're doing is we're giving each house basically more room than they typically would have if it were a two-family. So I'd ask for your hope to get your approval on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. And anybody else? Okay. Not seeing none. We'll go to board discussion on this. For me, this is pretty straightforward. There is plenty of space here for this, for another unit here, for a single-family dwelling. Just to clarify, this comes up a lot, the Zoning Board of Appeals. The job is to weigh sort of the zoning here and what is allowed by right or what is allowed on the property in the zoning board. We're not changing the fact that it's an RL7. These are all the things that happen with an RL7 that we're allowed to take into consideration when providing a variance. We provide variances. We, that's our purpose if we approve them. So it is par for the course for people to ask for a little bit of changes to allow what, different things to happen on properties. In this case, a division and a single-family home. If they did not come before us, they could just build a 9,000-square-foot single-family home, which is more space on this property. It would be one floor, but it would still be more actual space than is being requested here for this applicant. And the amount of variance, the amount of relief is de minimis. If there is something on the plan that is not what happens in reality, they have to come before the plan, they have to come back here and say, actually, that was not right, and we would then take that into consideration. But this is a stamped plan, so we believe what the experts are telling us about it. And I will say, having been out there, I've been in your neighborhood. It's a very lovely neighborhood. I do look at properties before I go by, and it seems like there's plenty of space on the, on that, looking at it. And I have been doing this for not as many years as Board Member Braumoff, but plenty. So it does, it did seem it, I did not get out of tape measure, but having been to a lot, it did seem that way for me. And so there is, if there is concern, I do also want to say again, I take very seriously the traffic concerns that people have before us when they come here. Ultimately, we can't do anything about it. You do have a city councilor. I encourage you to contact your city councilor. They are really the primary, if there is something happening where there's accidents or things happening on the street, that is their concern. We can't, we're not, we don't do traffic. We can't, we can't fix if people are speeding. And believe me, I have this, we asked our city councilor to get a speed bump right on our street because people go flying through. I, my kid is, you know, I have a kid. I worry about it, right? I definitely want to hear that concern. And ultimately, you should definitely contact your city councilor if you have any questions. If you have any questions about that, please do talk to the Planning Division. They can put you in contact with the transportation and mobility, and they can work on what is the best way to handle that. Dividing a lot for a single-family home is not a lot of traffic. People come and go maybe once or twice a day at most, right? Like, it's not a lot of traffic. They can park on the property. They're asking for a de minimis amount of relief, and they're asking to build less than they could legally build. All those being said, I'm a yes on this. Board Member Braumoff?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the relief they're looking for is quite minimal. We've seen much more requests for relief in the past. And given the by-right alternatives they have with this, I don't... And also, it seems to be consistent with much of the build-out of the rest of the neighborhood. It's not a building a high-rise or a big multifamily or trying to cram a lot in there. So I don't have any problem supporting this.
Board Member Cortez?
Through the chair. I agree with my colleagues here on the table regarding the size of the lot, allow us for this project to be built. I have no problems with the plan. You probably would be adherent to the recommendations made by the staff. Yes?
Yes.
And I only have one, one question probably to have a respond. And this is regarding, that we say, you did get a lot of support. I see the support that you have for the project in here. However, I do have, and here, part of the package you probably do have is a letter sent by Laura Mayers that is a concern regarding flood, water on the neighbor's backyard.
Through the chair. That was from the last application.
Oh, it's the wrong address over here. So it was in the package. I'm sorry. So I'll take it back. I have no problems.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I'm in support of this application, seeing the minimal relief being requested and the by-right alternatives that are available to the applicant. And then to further create the nexus to the Zoning Board of Appeals and our ability to, you know, grant these variances. It's just I see the need stemming from the shape of the lot. So with all that into consideration, I'll move forward with this. My questions are, you've seen the recommendations on the staff memo. Are you in agreement with all of those?
Yes, I am. Board Member Torcono?
I'm good to go.
Board Member Sacco?
Yep. Not much else to add here. I'm on board.
Okay. We normally have already closed conversation, but I, yes, you can come forward just with a comment really quickly. Go ahead. Just state your name again for the record.
My name's Alan Cussy. Okay. Question out of curiosity, if this does get approved, can we get them to move the driveway to the other side of the house so it's not buttoned against my driveway?
They're not planning to move the driveway, so it's...
If you go look at it, you can see it. Nobody's going to squeeze in there.
So you would, my suggestion is if you feel... they end up having to meet the curb, you can talk to inspectional services and planning. But as of right now, they don't have a plan to change anything.
Okay, because once they, once they dig the foundation, they're not going to change it, you know that.
Yes.
They won't be able to.
But to move the, to move the driveway, they would have to do something before it.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, beforehand, if they put the driveway down on the other side of the house instead of where it's going to be, because it's going to be a problem.
Okay, I will leave it to the applicant to answer your question.
And like I said, they come down the hill, now you have two active driveways right there instead of a driveway and a pad.
Okay, yep.
All righty.
Thank you very much. If the applicant would like to respond. Do, would you like to move the driveway?
No, I, I don't have anything further to add.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Sure move.
On the motion to close, Board Member Abramov?
Yes.
Board Member Campenello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 37 Summer Hill Avenue?
I'd like to make a motion on 37 Summer Hill Avenue for, on Lot 1, for a variance for relief of 10 feet from the 65 feet minimum frontage requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zoning district, and on Lot 2, for a variance for relief of 285 square feet from the 7,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zoning district, and for a variance for relief of 7.18 feet from the 65-foot minimum frontage requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zoning district, incorporating the, including the recommendations on page 3 of 7 of the staff memo, and the waivers as requested on page 4 of 7 of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Sure move.
On the motion, Board Member Abramov?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Campenello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We have a recusal for 172-174 Shrewsbury Street, so Board Member Sacco, you will be voting on this item. If the applicant could please come forward on 172-174 Shrewsbury Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mark Bornstein, attorney of the law firm Prince Lebel, here in Worcester, representing the applicant. This evening, joining me in person and remotely, I have Mikey Andrade of Graves Engineering, the engineer of record for the project, Victoria Epstein of Stonefield Engineering, who is the traffic engineer for the project, Rafael Hernandez, who is the architect for the project, and Natalie and Chris Durnuck, who is, who are representatives of the applicant. We have a short video for you, and then we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Through the Chair, give me one second.
Yes. Don't worry about it. Yes, oh yeah, you can have that.
How does the audio work? Am I just going to hit play, and it should be fine?
Is it, is anybody else cold yet? I'm freezing in here.
Weekend. That makes sense.
If I just hit play, it'll be good.
These videos were taken before. There should be music. All right. There's always music, it always starts with music. Jewett-Gamage Auto and Wagon Works building located at 172-174 Shrewsbury Street. That's how you know. Curated for each project. The property consists of an approximately 22,000-square-foot L-shaped lot occupied by an existing 21,329-square-foot building that has three stories along Shrewsbury Street, with one-story addition toward the rear of the property. The building was most recently used for office and personal service uses. The site also includes an unstriped surface parking area in the rear. The property is located in the Business General BG3 zoning district, the Commercial Corridors Overlay District, Shrewsbury Street Subarea, and the Union Station View Corridor Sign Overlay District. The property is bounded to the north and east by Joe DiMaggio Little League Field and East Park, to the south by Shrewsbury Street, and to the west by a mix of residential, commercial, and mixed-use buildings. The applicant is proposing to add two new stories above the existing one-story rear section of the building, and renovate the remainder of the building to create 44 new residential units consisting of 40 studios and four one-bedrooms, in addition to amenity space along Shrewsbury Street and an interior bike room. Of the 44 units, seven of the units will be affordable to households earning 60% to 80% AMI. The project will also provide 17 onsite parking spaces, including EV-ready spaces, a van-accessible space, and 10 compact spaces. Improvements also include resurfacing of the parking areas, new walkways, fencing, landscaping, new outdoor recreational areas, and essential utility upgrades. Given that the building will have new ground-floor residential units, and the property is located in the CCOD, the project is subject to the CCOD five-foot front yard setback requirement for which the applicant is seeking a variance. The applicant is also seeking variances to provide relief from the minimum off-street parking requirements and the maximum compact space requirements. The applicant will be implementing a transportation management plan and provide exterior and interior bike storage to further reduce auto-dependency at the site. The property also benefits from close proximity to Union Station and a WRTA bus stop at East Park. Moreover, Shrewsbury Street is rich with commercial and retail establishments, which are easily accessible by foot. The project is consistent with the Worcester Now Next Plan, given that the property is located in a transformative growth area, which is an area identified by the plan for high-walkability and transit access that can support higher-density housing. Overall, this redevelopment will provide 44 new residential units, including affordable units within a transit-rich, walkable neighborhood, revitalize an underutilized building, and will align with the city's vision for sustainable growth. We'll get there someday so it doesn't look so...
Out, and I'm too old for that low lighting.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we reviewed staff's recommended conditions of approval, they are acceptable to the applicant, and we would respectfully request the waivers recommended by staff. With that, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the project.
Okay, city staff.
Sure, through the Chair, this is Michelle Smith in the city's planning division. So, as stated in front of you, is a request for three variances. The first is related to the front yard setback requirement that we have within the Commercial Corridors Overlay District. This is one that you've seen a few times, but we do have a few newer members, so I'm just going to kind of recite what the requirements are. So for new construction, the setback would be five feet for anything that involves the ground-floor residential use, and for existing buildings, that is the same. So in this case, you have an existing building, that building is pretty much right up on the property line, as they're changing the use from a use that is not a ground-floor residence to a use that would involve a ground-floor residence, there is a new requirement that comes into play for the building to be setback five feet. Obviously, the applicant's not going to move the building, it's a historic building, but the intent and provisions of the Commercial Corridors Overlay District are to create walkable, mixed-use, active corridors for a variety of, of different reasons, but the regulation exists sort of in, in two different ways. One, to buffer those residential units that might be along the streetscape, to have a distance back where the foot traffic isn't necessarily coming up against them, but it also serves to disincentivize the loss of commercial storefronts, like what exists here on Shrewsbury Street and in other areas of the city, and there's another similar case on later this evening. So just wanted to clarify in terms of what is that requirement and what the kind of purpose of that is, that's where that stems from. In addition, they're seeking a variance for the amount of parking, so they're seeking about 37% relief from the minimum parking requirements. While those are reduced in the Commercial Corridor Overlay District, we do see that parking still being a challenge, something that we've outlined in the, the citywide long-range plan as a, something to modernize. So they require 27 parking spaces for this use, given the amount of units that are proposed to be affordable and their plans related to transportation demand management, and so that equates to a need to reduce the parking requirements further through a variance by 10 parking spaces. And finally, the applicant's also seeking to have in excess of the maximum 50% compact parking space requirement, so we only allow up to half of the parking spaces to be compact, which is eight by 16 feet rather than nine by 18 feet, so they're seeking to deviate from that requirement to provide additional spaces beyond that, up to essentially 59% of the parking. The applicant is proposing, as you heard in the, the video and you see here on the screen, to renovate the existing building into solely residential use. This would include the construction of a two-story addition on the rear portion that's not pictured on this particular deck, but you can kind of see beyond the, the trees there. The building abuts the park, and so it's in that back portion there where you see the cursor where the addition would be proposed. And then again, that's going to enable a total of 44 residential units to be constructed among the different floors, with no commercial space proposed to be provided. In the back, there is an existing parking lot that would be proposed to be renovated, and that would provide for 17 proposed parking spaces, as well as some exterior bicycle parking and interior bicycle parking, which are shown on the, the various different plans. In terms of the unit composition and breakdown, this is proposed to be smaller unit sizes, so these are smaller in terms of both square feet, but also in terms of their composition being studios and one-bedrooms. So the majority of these, 41 of the units, are proposed as studios, three are proposed as one-beds, but all in all, the studio units would range between 300 and 600 square feet, so they're quite small in size, and then the one-bedroom units would be 600 to 800 square feet in size, just to clarify that. 15% is proposed to be affordable, approximately, and the, the applicant is proposing a parking ratio of about .38 spaces per dwelling unit, as well as one parking space, one bicycle parking space per unit, so each of the units would end up effectively having a bicycle parking space. Not all of those are proposed to be interior, some of those are located outside, but I just want to just call attention to that, given the particulars of this corridor. Terms of staff comments, I, I won't go over the specific conditions, just the comments at this point, and then we'll direct the board to that. I'm not going to do a detailed analysis of the parking, I'm happy to explain that if any of the board members would like me to, but just to avoid for brevity. In terms of the by-right options here, the applicant could continue to use the ground-floor as commercial space, or eliminate any of the residential units that are proposed on that floor, and they could proceed without the need for that variance. Additionally, they could lease the 10 parking spaces they're seeking the variance for as off-site parking, as long as it complies with the requirements of the CCOD, which has a, a distance and kind of convenience factor factored in. And they could also reduce the number of compact spaces to have the proposal be able to proceed, you know, without discretionary approvals from this board. As I mentioned, the five-foot setback requirement in the CCOD is intended to help areas like Shrewsbury Street continue to stay vibrant and have this walkable pedestrianized feel, make sure that that feels active, so just wanted to emphasize the importance of that. That is played out as well as in the CCOD in terms of its objectives and principles. In the citywide long-range plan, this area is identified as a transformative area, indicating that there is high potential for walkability in there, areas that are underutilized and have the potential to transform or convert from what they are to something else, whether that's a manufacturing area or an empty lot, that this corridor has a lot of opportunity for that. So those are, are things that I think the board should think on. We did want the applicant specifically to address and discuss the feasibility of converting the, and I don't know if we could go to the floor plan, converting the amenity space that's shown directly facing Shrewsbury Street in the front, which will pull up, but if, if the applicant could seek to convert that to retain the commercial storefront that has kind of historically been present at the site, that, that feel, rather than having that just be amenity space. We know there are other challenges that the applicant has to meet recreational space requirements. Obviously, the property is immediately adjacent to a public park, so we understand the, the need to, to balance that, but wanted to see if the applicant has explored that or could explore that, given the, the intent of the provisions and the consistency with the long-range plan, as well as the, the principles of the CCOD in this area. So we are recommending that that be retained, if possible. The area, as I mentioned, is well-served by public transit, highly walkable, .1 miles from the nearest bus stop. Other approvals that would be needed for the project, just to highlight, because of the building's historic nature, demolition delay waiver would be required for any exterior alterations. If there's any alterations proposed to Rizzo Court, that would involve Chapter 12, Section 12 approval from the planning board, and then the applicant has filed for, and is in the process of seeking a definitive site plan approval, as well as a special permit for inclusionary zoning to authorize the additional reductions related to parking proposed for the project. We do have conditions of approval that are outlined on page 5 of 9 of the staff memo, which does require the applicant to provide information relative to the recreational space that I mentioned, and clarify the bicycle parking and how that relates to that recreational space in particular, some conditions related to the transportation demand management plan that would be perpetual, including bicycle parking requirements as perpetual conditions. But it does not include as a, a condition in the stated comments, a revision to the floor plan to reflect the space along Shrewsbury Street as being retained for commercial purposes. So if that's something that the board is interested or desires to see, I would just note that the applicant may need either to continue the hearing to allow for us to assess the specific impacts of that design change on the proposal and any relief that's needed to enable that, or that's something that the board would want to add as an additional condition. Happy to answer any questions the board might have. Thanks.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think it all comes down to what is the use in the front of the building based on staff's comments. And so, I just want to highlight for the board, and I think staff touched upon this a bit, there's a lot of constraints with respect to this building. One, it's a historic building. Two, given that it's in the business zoning district, we need to provide recreational uses onsite, despite the fact that it is surrounded by recreational uses. That is what the ordinance requires. Beyond that, the, the applicant is seeking to make the project financially viable, they previously had commercial tenants, they are converting to residential because that is the highest and best use of this particular property. They've sought tenants for that front space, they made the decision not to provide that commercial space from a business perspective. When we originally proposed the project to staff, there was a residential unit in that particular space. We spoke with staff, staff expressed to us the importance of maintaining that, in accordance with the CCOD guidelines, that walkable inviting environment. The applicant is committed to providing that walkable environment through an amenity space within the context of the historical requirements. This is going to require a demolition delay, demolition delay waiver from the Historic Commission, therefore, we cannot provide the large glossy windows that you might see in other areas of the CCOD. So I think this is an instance where we need to find a, a kind of meeting point between the CCOD guidelines and the adaptive reuse of a historic building. So we recognize staff's comment, I personally would like to see commercial units throughout the city and residential above, but from a financial standpoint, it's not possible with respect to this particular development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have regarding that particular question.
Thank you very much. Is there any money here for 172-174 Shrewsbury Street? Great, one at a time, just come forward, state your name and city or town of residence.
Rich LeMay, Worcester, Mass. We own the building right next door, and, well, you explained the parking a little bit, but I still don't think it's feasible to put 17 spots for 42 units. Plus, Rizzo Court is the only way to get into the back there. I don't even think you can fit a fire truck down there. I don't know how they could, well, they can get down, they can't, they can't turn around and come back out. They've sought tenants for that front space. They made the decision not to provide that commercial space from a business perspective. When we originally proposed the project to staff, there was a residential unit in that particular space. We spoke with staff. Staff expressed to us the importance of maintaining that in accordance with the CCOD guidelines, that walkable inviting environment. The applicant is committed to providing that walkable environment through an amenity space within the context of the historical requirements. This is going to require demolition delay waiver from the Historic Commission. Therefore, we cannot provide the large glossy windows that you might see in other areas of the CCOD. So I think this is an instance where we need to find a kind of meeting point between the CCOD guidelines and the adaptive reuse of a historic building. So we recognize staff's comment. I personally would like to see commercial units throughout the city and residential above, but from a financial standpoint, it's not possible with respect to this particular development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have regarding that particular question.
Thank you very much. Is there any money here for 172-174 Shrewsbury Street? Great, one at a time, just come forward, state your name and city or town of residence.
Richard Lemay, Worcester, Mass. We own the building right next door, and, well, you explained the parking a little bit, but I still don't think it's feasible to put 17 spots for 42 units. Plus, Rizzo Court is the only way to get into the back there. I don't even think you can fit a fire truck down there. I don't know how they could, well, they can't get down, they can't turn around and come back out. Like, if a car pulls in Rizzo Court and cars coming down, the car pulling and has to back out into Shrewsbury Street. So the street's too narrow. So it's pretty much a safety concern, besides, there's no place to park. There's no place to park now on Shrewsbury Street. So they had 42 units, it's just going to make it worse.
Thank you. Through the city, just a question about, there's a review of this for the fire would review this, and sort of accessibility, is that correct?
Yeah, through the chair. So the application did come to the city's sort of interdepartmental review team. That gets reviewed through that process by the fire department, as well as through this process. I'm just confirming with my colleague to clarify if there were any comments that were provided from the fire department. We typically attach those or append those here. So we'll comment on that in one second, but the fire department did have the opportunity to provide comments. There, I'll clarify, and we can put on the screen in a second. The Rizzo Court is a narrow private street. It is paved and currently functions as a two-directional traffic flow as it's proposed to be maintained. There is an existing parking area behind the property today. It's a similar size and obviously different condition. It's being proposed to be improved into a nicer condition than it exists today. At the end of the street, there's property that's part of the city park, and there's recently a parking lot that was reconstructed or constructed in that area. And my understanding is that that provided some enhancements for maneuverability along a portion of the way, as well as for larger apparatus to turn around. I don't recall the specifics of that, and I'm not sure if my colleague was able to confirm on the comments.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, my recollection from IRT was DTM and Fire requested a circulation plan regarding a fire truck, which was prepared and submitted as part of the planning board application. Rizzo Court is very narrow, but that being said, the city sought fit to build a new ballpark right off of Rizzo Court, with plenty new parking spaces. So to a certain degree, it's suitable for that additional traffic. I would just note for the board that, as Ms. Smith noted, the existing parking lot is being restripped and just resurfaced. We're not proposing any new parking spaces. We're not proposing a new driveway curb cut. The parking is existing. And I would also note, and this is included in the findings, that the off-street parking requirements for the existing commercial uses is fairly comparable to the building expanded. So given that that building previously served a commercial use with the same off-street parking requirements, we would assert that this will adequately serve this proposed use.
Other folks? Yep, please come forward, state your name and city and town or town of residence.
Yes, Steve Germaine, residing in Worcester. I'm also part of the building next door, that we own that building next door. That's all well and good what they're talking about with the, the baseball field's been there forever. We've had that building next door since 1954, so we're not new to the neighborhood trying to oppose anything. We've been there a long time. There was a baseball field there from back when I was a kid, so it's been there a long time. CSX, when they came in, they donated money to redo that field. The parking lot that they're talking about that they can turn around in, it's locked. It's a locked lot. Nobody can use that lot, okay? The video that they had was beautiful, made everything look great. It's too bad they didn't videotape two vehicles, one trying to get up, one trying to get down. I know you guys aren't really concerned with traffic, but this is an issue. We have two accesses for our lot. They have one, Rizzo Court, okay? So we can get out on Rizzo Court, we can get out on Shrewsbury Street, not a problem, okay? You know, they say in the fire department, I don't know how they approve that, because if there's an emergency, somebody's got to back out into Shrewsbury Street or back all the way up, okay? So, and I believe the former owners of that property filed a lawsuit against the city of Worcester when they were putting the Little League new field in there because the street was too narrow, and I don't know if that's been resolved yet. So if the former owner that sold them the building says it's too narrow, now these guys want to add apartments with all these, you've got 44 apartments, people are going to have cars, how are the people going to get in and out? We're just hitting winter. Once the snow comes, that street's even narrower. It's maybe 100, it's not even a street, it's a court. It's maybe 100 yards, yards long, and it's very narrow. Like you said, everything looked beautiful around, the whole presentation looked beautiful, except you're not focusing on that area right there where people, plus you have the two, three family houses must have eight to 10 cars. So it's a nightmare on that area. So that's pretty much, let's, you know.
Yep, thank you very much.
Through the chair, I can just answer the question that you previously had related to the fire department comments. So we don't have any comments provided related to access. The comments that were provided were related to the existing fire suppression system and modifications that would be needed to that, as well as plans needed relative to the fire suppression system during renovation. So those were the comments that were provided by the fire department. The project, like I mentioned, requires additional site plan review through the planning board. Typically, that will be another point of review. I'll also add that the Department of Transportation and Mobility typically looks for those plans and reviews them. They did provide comments, did not cite anything with specific to that. They indicated that they felt the trip generation analysis was reasonable and that a traffic study would not be needed, given the net trips that are shown here in that reduction, which I'm hoping the applicant's counsel can summarize for the benefit of the board, as well as residents and businesses that are interested in here this evening.
I certainly could, but I have Victoria Epstein from Stonefield. If she could raise her hand and be allowed to speak, she can provide an overview of her analysis.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Victoria Epstein. I'm here with Stonefield Engineering. I practice out of our office at 120 Washington Street in Salem, Massachusetts. And as mentioned, our office did prepare a traffic study for this development and to just give a brief overview of our findings. These were prepared using typical industry standards, which are done specifically the Institute of Transportation Engineers is kind of the golden standard, if you will, for projecting developments of this type. So we took a look not only at the proposed land use, which in its own is generally an insignificant development, as multifamily residential uses such as this typically don't really generate a ton of traffic. You know, there's kind of a lower turnover compared to your typical commercial developments. You know, typically a marginal amount of traffic during commuting hours. So just to summarize those findings, ITE, as we'll call it, shows about 13 total trips, that's four vehicles entering, nine vehicles exiting in the typical weekday morning. And similarly, you'd see about potentially 12 vehicles exiting, or sorry, 12 vehicles entering and eight vehicles exiting, for a total of 20 vehicle trips during a typical weekday evening peak hour. And now the city of Worcester defines any development of about 20 trips or less as insignificant. And to further kind of build on that, we also took a look at the net trip generation, as this site was previously filled with various tenants, mostly commercial office and personal service uses. So when you take that into consideration, you would get a pretty marginal reduction in net trip generation. So we'd be looking at approximately 14 less trips in the morning peak hour, and then about five less trips in the typical weekday evening peak hour. And if you're looking at the full weekday, you may see a marginal increase overall, but again, that would be spread out as residential uses typically do not have the same kind of fluctuation in turnover as a commercial development. That kind of summarizes the trip generation. I'm happy to answer any other questions or go into any further analysis as you would like.
Other folks would like to speak. Just state your name and city or town of residence.
My name is Robert Bronka. I'm from Branded Realty Group. We're at 72 Shrewsbury Street, not far from this project. I want to agree with my fellow property owners about the parking situation. I agree with the traffic engineer about trip generation. I think it's insignificant. However, the relief being sought, 17 spaces for 44 units and an increase in the compact spaces, I believe, is a bridge too far for this type of conversion and the addition of spaces. And not that we're against, and I'm also a member of the Shrewsbury Street Merchants Association, so there's been significant concern about the parking expressed at our last meeting. I also have extensive experience with multifamily development and managing parking lots, large commercial lots on Shrewsbury Street. And the parking, the competition for parking is intense. The last snowstorm, as was just mentioned, we had 25 cars that appeared from nowhere in our lot. Four o'clock in the morning, we couldn't plow the lot because people just put their cars there. There was no place else to put them. We have the same problem up on Wall Street, which isn't very far from here. We've had to design an extensive parking management system for that complex. 72 units, there are at least twice that many cars. Just because it's a one-bedroom unit doesn't mean it's going to be one vehicle. And we're one of the few areas in Massachusetts, fortunately, where population is growing, so more people with more cars are coming. Again, traffic is good in a commercial district. It'd be very bad if there wasn't traffic there. So we're not opposed to that. And I had a hard time hearing when Ms. Smith talked about alternate parking and through the chair, if Mr. Boringstein had an alternate parking area. I thought I heard something like that, where off-site people could park cars? No?
So I think what we were mentioning may be the parking lot that's for the city. I'm not exactly sure which part of that, but no, there's no, there's no proposed leasing of spots as a part of this plan currently.
Our only concern is, again, the parking requirement, and there are private areas that could be leased for parking, and if the board would consider making that a condition of approval, or a reduction in the number of units. And again, I know that we have experience and award-winning experience renovating and restoring and reactivating historic buildings. This is not a building that's in disuse. It's full of tenants. They actually, a social service agency just two weeks ago moved their offices into that building. So it's not a building that's in danger of being lost to neglect or being vacant. Again, we don't oppose it being converted to residential use. I think it's probably a good, a good idea, just the lack of parking. Just my experience tells me it will definitely create a problem in that very congested area.
Thank you very much. Other folks? If it's all right with you, I've got to let a few more folks speak. Do you want to answer that, or can I let a few more?
I would just know, and I don't know if Victoria wants to jump in, but one of the aspects of the submission was the TDM plan, which is to encourage folks to not bring vehicles on site. And a big aspect of that is when you're marketing the units to individuals, when they know there's no parking on site, that becomes a consideration. They can go to a different development if they require on-site parking. These are smaller units, these aren't two-bedroom units, that would lend themselves to one or two people, or, you know, families for that matter. So there's less of an expectation for cars on site. And so I hear the comment, obviously, it's always good to have parking on site when available, but this is also a major commercial corridor in the city, where we are within a 13-minute walk of Union Station. So I frankly can't think of a better area to provide additional residential units without off-street parking.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, just wanted to clarify relative to the question from Mr. Bronka about staff comments related to off-site parking. My comments were that that is permissible through zoning, so they can count the parking spaces through off-site. So that's an alternative.
Yes, go ahead, just state your name and city or town of residence.
Good evening, Diana Biancaria, Worcester, Mass. Okay, a couple of comments have been made tonight and in reference to this, and I find it amazing that we're discussing this this evening due to the fact that there wasn't one neighborhood meeting held. Nothing, not with the merchants, not with the residents. And anytime this size of a renovation of a historical building, per se, even if it's not a historical building, there has always been some type of circulation to the neighborhoods, and there's been nothing. And I'm a lifetime resident of Shrewsbury Street. I have lived off Shrewsbury Street, walked it, rode my bicycle, I drive my car every day up and down Shrewsbury Street. So I'm very familiar with Rizzo Court, many years at East Park. So I find it significant that nothing has been said to merchants, and they hold their meeting once a month. Nothing has been said to neighbors. I also can't imagine 44 apartments with 17 spaces. We just had a few years back several meetings in reference to a manufacturing at a building on Shrewsbury Street further up, and there were several meetings in reference to what they were going to do and how they were going to do it, and what was necessary for parking. We don't have an area to say we have a large, a parking lot, we have a large facility to park cars. That's impossible to occur, it has never occurred. I don't have a problem with looking at additional residential building in the area, but when you're dealing with Shrewsbury Street, a main area that every ambulance going to UMass is going up and down it, and we have the potential of Rizzo Court having additional traffic with the thought that not everyone's going to have a vehicle, we should take a look at what they did with Montgomery and the apartments. That garage is full every single day. When Union Station has an event, we have Shrewsbury Street full with cars. It's New England, it's going to snow. We are going to have a winter parking ban. There is nowhere else to park. Not every piece of property has a driveway. Along with the fact that there were no meetings held in the neighborhood, this particular area already has had issues with the former owner that there is a disagreement with having a ball field at East Park. We have it renovated, we have it ready, and now we're not going to be able to get in and out and use it if this occurs, because it's going to add additional traffic to Rizzo Court. Rizzo Court has always been a road that people have used to go to East Park, to park their car, to watch a baseball game, to watch football, to play basketball. It has not been a stationary place. We had restaurants in that building, we have businesses, they're going in and out. But at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, it's pretty much quiet, so there are some spaces there for people who would like to go to East Park to utilize. We don't have spaces on Shrewsbury Street available, whether it's a Sunday or it's a Friday night. There are not an abundance of spaces there. And anytime that you look at what Shrewsbury Street has and needs, let's face it, we've spent all summer with sewer pipes being repaired. So the infrastructure is not there, and it's not complete to then have additional apartments, 44 apartments with no parking available to the residents, along with the fact that we have sewer issues and we have water issues. So two more floors added to a building at this particular time in these, under these circumstances, certainly as a resident, and I've spoken to other residents over the last five hours, when I was informed that this meeting was being held tonight, and along with some of the merchants, and no one is saying, yes, this is great. Every single person said that we're opposed to it. So we have merchants that are not available this evening to come to say that they are opposed to it, and we have residents that are opposed to it. This piece of what they are requesting is not minor. This piece of what they are requesting is not minor for a neighborhood that has three deckers, no driveways. It's an ambulance route. It has to be open. It has to be available. It has to be recognized as something that there certainly needs to be numerous discussions before any of this moves forward. Thank you.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to speak to the comment regarding community outreach. We did reach out to representatives of this particular district. We were advised at the time when the project was contemplated, given, you've probably heard of some of the comments, some of the hostility in the neighborhood regarding the park and lawsuits involved in the park, that we should not proceed with any neighborhood outreach meetings because of the pending lawsuit, just because the tensions were pretty high in the neighborhood. Our thought was, we actually advanced the application. We thought the matter was resolved by the courts, but I guess it's not being resolved by the courts. It's kind of, I don't want to start conflating a private matter with the board's application before the board. But certainly, there was certain outreach, and I would recognize that we certainly could have had additional outreach in the neighborhood, but there certainly was outreach to certain representatives of the neighborhood. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear to the board.
Friend Nathan Worcester. But first, before I start, I have no vested interest. I don't live down there. I used to live close by, but that was almost 20 years ago. But having said that, to live in a nice apartment, it's too bad they can't retrofit the building and take the first floor and turn it into parking on the first floor, make like a garage down there. But that would cost a fortune, I'm sure. And obviously, if they were to buy one of the neighboring three-deckers and try to make parking, whoever was selling it would know that, well, I can get whatever I want, but, I mean, you know, let's face it, it's the American way. If you can make money, we're not going to hold it against anybody trying to make money. But, you know, it's too bad you can't be like Boston and let people just, you know, move into a place and tell them, sorry, you're going to have to worry about your own parking. If they have to park, I mean, places like New York and Boston, they might park a half a mile from where they actually live. It's unfortunate. As Worcester keeps on growing, there will be more problems like this, because you want to add more housing. They want to add another 15,000 units. Well, all I can say is, people might have to walk a greater distance than walking two feet out their door to get to their car. It's unfortunate, but like I said, as Worcester grows, you're going to have this problem over and over and over and over.
If it's a repetitive comment, I'm going to ask that it's not, but if it's new, I'll ask for brevity. Yep, go ahead.
I just need some clarification. Diana Biancaria, Worcester. Need some clarification, because with noise in the hallway and so on, I just want to make sure that the statements that were made after I spoke in reference to meetings held in the neighborhood, did I hear correctly that they were told not to have additional meetings? Is that correct?
If you let the respondent applicant respond, sure. They can answer that question for you.
So, to address the question, no. The person did not say not to have additional meetings. At the time, we suggested a meeting, and we were told that tensions were pretty high in the neighborhood, and therefore, we waited a couple of months until the matter was resolved and the application moved forward. So, unfortunately, it was a certain, it was kind of the timing of the overture to the neighborhood versus when we actually opened the hearing. And I acknowledge that that could have been handled better, but that unfortunately was the way things progressed. I would also note that I'm pretty accessible in the city of Worcester, and if anyone had an issue with this particular application, they certainly could reach out to me or staff. As far as I know, there was only one comment from a neighbor regarding this particular application. So, I mean, my information's everywhere. Not saying that it's on the butters to reach out to me, but I would note, again, for the board, that I did reach out to the elected officials for this particular area.
Other folks for 172, 174 Shrewsbury Street, let's give people online a chance to weigh in as well. If you are online, you can use the raise your hand function to speak, or you can be, you can ask to speak by pressing star nine if you're on your phone. Yes, go ahead, Amy.
Phone with the last four digits, 2806.
Just state your name, please, and city or town of residence.
Hi, my name is Cleo Vasquez. I'm also here with my wife, Omira Vasquez. We live at 5 Rizzo Court, second floor in Worcester, Massachusetts.
Go ahead.
I am opposed to this project for a number of reasons. The street, I've been, I've lived here 16 years. In those 16 years, I can't tell you the many times I've almost come head-on with another car coming down the street as I'm coming in the street, coming home from work, trying to get out, car coming in. Somebody's either always backing off the Shrewsbury Street and it's going to cause a serious accident one day. The street is extremely narrow. If by chance two cars are coming in the opposite direction, you almost hit the consumer auto part building brick wall there. That's how narrow it is. I've seen emergency vehicles come down the street and struggle to back out and get up, you know, get back out to Shrewsbury and get on their way. So, over the, having 44 more units added near this, even though people won't have cars or a bike friendly route or whatever, it's going to be a major issue with parking here. Right now, I come home from work and I don't have parking. I got to wait two, three, four hours sometimes till 10 o'clock at night when the restaurants start winding down, and go now down the street, grab my car, come home, park it, and then go to sleep. So, parking is a major, major, major issue here, and adding something of that size, that many units, is just going to make a bad problem, a really, really bad problem. So, I'm really opposed to this project happening. That's what I got to say on that one.
If I could just, if I could just ask a question real quick. I missed what street you're on. Are you?
Rizzo Court.
Is it the?
I live on Rizzo Court.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they said number five for Rizzo.
Five, okay, thank you.
Number five, Rizzo Court, yeah.
Thank you very much. I apologize for missing that.
No problem.
Anybody else online, please use the raise your hand function. Anybody else here for 172, 174 Shrewsbury Street?
Just a reminder, star nine if you're online.
We're going to close the public comment and go to the board comment on 172, 174 Shrewsbury Street. So, I'll say for myself, I'm not, I'm not that comfortable with, with the first variance regarding sort of the 4.8 feet of the five-foot minimum front yard setback. I am moved by the applicant moving instead of having a residence there, having the sort of, having a recreational space there. But I just, I, and I understand the, that it is currently in vogue, which is weird to have housing as opposed to commercial. It was so long that it was the opposite in those spaces. But that being said, I think the CCOD's desire to have, I think the state, the city might have been communicating my frustration to the city, so on that, I will, I will say that I was, had a lot of questions about that myself because of the, because of the location of Shrewsbury Street and a desire to have a commercial in those spaces. So, I will say that I'm not currently comfortable with that variance. I would like to keep sort of the nature of a commercial space on Shrewsbury Street for walkability. Just one second. And so, that, that to me, that to me is something that's generally important. And if I had to balance the 10% for, for having recreational space or having sort of commercial, I would, I would rather us have a variance for the 10%, because obviously there's a park. You don't need 10% of recreational space. You don't need any recreational space for this particular unit, for this particular sorry building. So, I would rather, if you, like, for myself, again, speaking for one vote, I myself would rather balance have, not having recreational space or limiting it, however, whatever works for you all onsite, and instead, try to keep the impetus of the CCOD ordinance. Yep.
If I may, Mr. Chair, through you to staff, because I know that the application of this particular measurement has changed over time. And so, it's my understanding that we're not allowed to, and maybe this is different, so I just, through you to staff, including the building commissioner, who is fortunately here. The question is, my understanding was always that we couldn't have any ground floor residential units, period, not just the front of the building. And so, given that the entire first floor, putting aside that amenity space would have residential units, I think it's a different conversation as to eliminate all of those versus just the front unit.
Oh, just, just the front unit for, you're, but you're asking that question.
My understanding is the variance would still be required because we have units behind that particular unit. Maybe the interpretation's changed.
Okay, yes, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Thank you for that question, yeah, to the staff.
Through the chair, the variance would still be required in terms of the, any ground floor unit, regardless of its orientation to the street, requires a variance. So, the staff comment wouldn't alleviate the need for the variance unless the applicant, as I mentioned for the byright options, the applicant could eliminate all the ground floor residential units.
I got it, yeah.
In favor of whether it's commercial space or other amenity space or some combination thereof, that's how the variance would be alleviated. Ultimately, you know, the board is still considering the variance with the conditions.
I got it. I apologize. That's my mistake. So, I'm comfortable with the variance. I would like some sort of commercial unit in the front space. The other things I'll say really quickly about this application, I'm generally in favor of more housing and certainly, generally of this application. I tend to think people, if they know what they're getting themselves into, they can choose for themselves to try to figure out a space without parking. And so, I'm not, I'm sort of comfortable with moving it forward from that perspective. It's a four-way street, two on both sides. I can't possibly imagine a scenario where ambulances would be affected on Shrewsbury Street by this. And I do think, or, and like, it's not up to the applicant or the zoning board to fix our sewer or water issues, per se. This building already exists, so it's not going to dramatically affect the water runoff, and the sewer is certainly up to the city. So, those are, those are not under consideration for me in this moment. I think there is concern about the, about the street. That should be covered by the planning board. I want to make sure that that's, that our concern for that is noted, but that is a site plan review, so that is not technically, although we can consider it, it's not in our purview, per se. It's a part of our thinking about this project in its totality, but the actual, if the, if the fire department, whatever the recommendation is, like, we are bound by some rules around this stuff, so that is a site plan review question for the planning board. I would love for that, I'm sure they will tackle it. I will say I also have those questions, and I would encourage them to look into it. So, that's the, I think, yeah, those are sort of the totality of my thoughts on this project. Board member, Eberen Muff.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question. Can you, Amy, can you move this up a little bit so I can see what's now in the low, up the other way? So, this parking lot that's striped, that's the city's, and is that locked at all times? Or is that, does anybody have any information on that?
I can, through the chair, I can clarify that that is a, it's a municipal lot, and the parking spaces are not available for use for anything than other, than park purposes because it's parkland.
Thank you, thank you. One other question I have, Amy, if you can move it back the other way now. The other uses of this is that there's two, three-family houses, and there's the, it looks like there's three other buildings associated with this. The one directly right next to it, this one there, and then this other one to the other side. They all exist now, and it just seems to me that the amount of traffic and use of this is not going to be much different than currently exists. So, that's just a comment I'm making. So, there's really no change in trips. It's definitely a tight area. It's a city. It's a tight area. I think that it's the responsibility of the landlord here to figure out a way to manage the parking. And without giving it tons of thought, this was just presented tonight, I would say numbered, assigned parking spaces and, you know, for those, the 17 that exist. And when you rent, if I were to look to rent here, I would say, where can I park my car? And you're going to say, well, no, I don't have any spaces.
Right.
And then it's my decision to be there or not. So, I think that's an individual decision that they're going to have to deal with. I would recommend that that's the way you handle it or some similar fashion. Also, snow removal, I don't know if the city addressed this, but I think it should be moved off-site.
That's acceptable to the applicant.
Yeah.
I think we have some, we have some small snow storage areas, but certainly, I think there's a note on the plan that, through the chair, to the extent that the snow storage onsite meets capacity, it's trucked offsite.
I think it's going to have to happen to any realistic thing. I mean, I would recommend, what makes me more comfortable with this is, you know, if the snow is moved off-site, if there are assigned spaces, otherwise, it's a free-for-all. It's 30 or 40 people all fighting for the same 17 spaces. Coming down, there's not a space there. They're going to leave their car and create a big conflict with the other, other users of that street. The other thing that I would, I would like to see would be, you know, you talked about, what is it, recreational or amenity space in the front? Rent it out to a commercial gym that includes membership for the building residents, or something like that. Would be just a suggestion.
Certainly.
I'm not telling you how to manage it, but it looks like there might be a commercial opportunity there. I don't know if it's been considered or not. I do like that to help to make housing affordable, we have to make it smaller. People all can't live in a 3,000-square-foot house or 2,000-square-foot apartment, and these are small. It's going to, and create additional affordability, and that's something that I think is a prime concern for me. And so, given the conditions here, I think I can support this, if that, my suggestions are amenable in some form or fashion.
Right. And I would just reiterate for the board, through the chair, that 15, approximately 15, 16% of the units will be affordable, in addition to being smaller units.
There is a lot of public transportation in the area and a lot of jobs that are walkable in the area.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Board member Cortez.
Through the chair. I am very familiar with the area. And I, although I see that this is a good combination of housing and commercial, good combination there, however, there are several issues in here of concern, of encroachment to the neighborhood. I, I know, and we all know in Worcester, what the traffic on Shrewsbury Street is, East Park has a number of programs in there that, when that happens, it's just no, no way people can move around. I'm looking into perhaps, and so, the provision of parking to me is essential and critical. How do you do it? By reducing the number of, the number of units may be the way, but to provide parking. I, I, I recognize those. may be the way, but to provide parking. I, I, I recognize those, those concerns, and I know it because I live myself going, going through the, through that area every day and so forth. Early in the morning, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon, Shrewsbury Street is bumper to bumper to get out. Now, that's in regards to, to parking. Now, in regards to the, to, to the access, the narrow street, the access to the back, to the rear apartments, to the new apartments that are coming up, that, when my children were playing softball in there, I, I, I got into the, to the softball parking on the back of that building there through the narrow space. There's no way that, that you can turn around. And I'm, and I'm not a person to the project or anything like that or criticizing. I'm looking at the safety and the encroachment of, of, of who is going to be living there versus the, versus the, the general public coming in now. There's no way you, people can turn around. The, the, the fire trucks in there, going, they're going in there, fire on the back building there. How do we, they turn around to get out? Two, three, three, four trucks, ambulance and so forth. That's, that's dangerous to me. That's, it's.
They turn around in the parking lot?
It's, it's, it's part of, it's part of that. Maybe, maybe they can do that. Now, I'm, I'm not sure if you could show me the pic, and some of the pictures here. Where is the main entrance? I know right now, I know right now, the front building has an, the entrance access for people living in there. I'm not sure what the, the, the people coming into the apartments and the rear, the new proposed building there.
Sure.
Where is the people, the, the main entrance for those there?
So there'll be an entrance here and there'll be an entrance on Shrewsbury Street.
So they would come in through the, through the front building?
So they can come through the front? Or they can come in through the back?
They would come in through the front building.
Through Shrewsbury, through Shrewsbury Street.
They would not, they would not be walking.
They don't have to walk down Rizzo Court, no?
They would not walk into the narrow street?
No, through the chair.
Okay. So that was a question I had.
And so if I may, through the chair, so you can see here, I think it's approx, I'm trying to get oriented. I think this is the curb cut right here.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm going to be with you there, I guess.
Through the chair, would you like the architectural plans again? Or how would you want?
I don't think we need the architectural plans. I think he's more concerned about the driveway curb cut. So the existing driveway curb cut is not being modified substantially, as far as I know. And I'll turn to Graves. Graves is saying no. So this is an existing parking area. And so we're just restriping it and using it as is. And so what we have is we have a plan from Graves Engineering showing an emergency vehicle entering the site.
Okay. Now, my question and, and, and on the entrance access, I know right now people that have access here. So are people going to come in and walk all this long way to, to get access to this apartments through the inside of the building?
So through the chair, maybe, Amy Beth, we can show the architectural plans now. Yep. So there will be an entrance from Shrewsbury Street that will be easier for folks to reach their apartments without having to walk the entire length of the building.
So, so no pedestrian would be walking to the outside of the buildings?
So, no, no one will be walking outside the building. So you see here, this is the entrance?
Yes.
So they walk in and there's an elevator here. And they can walk to their unit down there in the building.
It's a long walk, but that's not for me to.
It's a, it's a long, narrow building. I mean, it's an existing building. So that's a footprint that we have.
It's a half a walk for those apartments there.
The parking, they'll enter from the back.
The parking area is where.
The entrance has its own entrance.
So the parking, the parking area has their own entrance, but this is the primary entrance.
Okay.
So when, so when folks go to their job and they come back from Union Station and they walk down Shrewsbury Street, they'll walk right into this door.
Okay. The reason I ask that is, is for the safety, safety issues for, you know.
We're not encouraging pedestrians to walk down Rizzo Court by any means.
Now, now those buildings are right next to the, to the, to East Park. Someone mentioned that, you know, they play baseball there, play soccer, they play sports in there. So those windows, the building, are they, they're going to be hit by, by objects, balls, softball, so are they going to be screened or somehow to, to prevent breaking glass or breaking glass there?
Through, through the chair, I believe the baseball fields on both sides have some type of fencing or net.
Because there's currently people in there.
There's already, this is already an existing building there. There are already windows there.
Yeah. Through the chair, I can clarify that the Parks Commissioner had some concerns about some of the improvements as it relates to the netting for the site plan and specific comments about the types of trees that would be planted to make sure that they don't interfere with the existing netting.
Okay.
So, but if I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to direct, just respond to some of the comments regarding traffic. So based on our traffic analysis, traffic will decrease from the site because residential units have fewer trips per day than a commercial use. So with respect to the neighbors' concerns regarding Rizzo Court and, you know, conflicts along Rizzo Court, there will be less conflicts with respect, there are conflicts, to the extent there are conflicts on Rizzo Court with the residential use versus a commercial use. In addition, with respect to the off-street parking, I think we, we've discussed this, but just to reiterate, the developer will be communicating directly to tenants that parking is not being provided onsite, and they're going to encourage tenants that do not have vehicles.
I, I still do see that, that the recent enough, even though you're meeting the, the level of parking requirements, but it's not enough to provide the actual reality of what is, what, what's going to happen. So providing parking for every tenant there would be the right way to do it. And this is why I'm, I'm saying, maybe by reducing the number of units or it can be done. Any other way, I'm not sure. May I ask, I have a question for the staff. Is, is there a, is there a way that we can, because I would, I would suggest that, and see where, where would that go? Can we refer, refer this back to the zoning board for that? Because there are issues in there. There are issues that that needs to be approved by, by.
You say the planning board?
Where are the zoning board? Do you mean the board?
I mean, by the planning board.
It hasn't go before the planning.
Yeah, we're, so you're the first step, and then we would go to planning board. So we're seeking a, a portion of the relief and the approvals, and then we go to the planning board for the additional approvals, to the extent that this board sees fit to grant the approvals.
We are first, yeah. Yeah, yes, yes. Okay, the reason, I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
No, I, I hear your concerns, and I think there's something obviously about.
If, if the planning board, if the planning board, you know, has, has, has resolved all the, any issues according to them, that would be issue. But that's fine. No further questions, Mr. Arron.
Okay. Board member Torcono.
I think this building doesn't require too many parking or tenants with a lot of parking. It's a city space. We want this city to be a walkable city. And I don't think people with a lot of cars will be occupying such a space, or people with kids will be occupying such a space. So I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Okay. Board member Sacco.
I'm really on the fence with this one. I grew up as an Eastside kid. I'm very familiar with the area. This is a very, very busy area in the city. And I think adding this amount of new units all at the same time on one of the busiest streets in the whole city could cause some disruption. That's with the overall quality of life. People are worried also of the surrounding businesses. That's my primary concern. I think it's a great proposal. I understand there's a growing, you know, need for more living arrangements in the city, but I don't know if 44 new ones in this particular area is necessarily something I could stand behind. So I'm very on the fence.
Okay, thank you. So.
Through the chair, we do have somebody that has had their hand raised before board comment was going. So I don't know if you want to have them.
No, definitely. Yeah, we want to listen to people. If, Amy Beth will let you speak. So just state your name and city or town or residence, please. Yes, go ahead. Just state your name.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anthony Petroni Worcester. I've been listening for two hours, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to get in, in time. I don't know what happened. Technical error on my end. I also own five Rizzo Courts. But in addition to that, Mr. Chairman, I also am the president of the Joe DiMaggio Little League. And I just, there's so much was said that I was trying to write some notes down. But in particular, with the new, and I say new, the new renovated Joe DiMaggio Little League that has not opened yet, they did, the city did put in a parking for, not the Little League, but for the people that want to use the park, okay? So I think it's, and I could be saying correctly, might be 30 spaces, the new lot which has been locked. So residents that do live on Rizzo Court cannot park there. But more importantly, the field, once it's up and running, because it's not fully done yet, there's going to be a building that's going to be built on that land, on the parkland, which is going to be our concession stand with bathrooms, which we've never had. It was mentioned earlier by, I think, the attorney that there's been an existing field there. Well, the field hasn't been used. And just for the record and for the board to understand, that field was only used for the young kids, the little ones, the five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. Before they took the Little League field down at Mark Carmel, we had the older boys and girls using that field. Okay, so the traffic was much less down on Rizzo Courts. We, and was previously stated, it's the minor league field. We called it the minor league field. Okay, we don't have two fields anymore, Mr. Chairman, so we're going to have one field with all the new teams from young to ages 10 through 12, from five and six-year-olds, all on one field. Okay, so there will be way more traffic than's ever been seen before, once the league is up and running. Okay, so I just want to give the board member that picture right now, that, that road coming in off of Shrewsbury Street is extremely narrow. It opens up a little, but in the addition of the city doing the parking lot, they actually shrunk Rizzo Court. Okay, I don't know if there's any, a diagram there that shows it, but that, that, they took parkland and made the, the parking lot, but then they came into Rizzo Court and shrunk it. So it's not nowhere near as wide as it once was, and it's, and that's where the two, three families are. There's three Rizzo Courts and five Rizzo Courts. Understand this, Mr. Chairman, that three Rizzo Courts has a small driveway. My property at five Rizzo Courts does not have any driveway. I have three tenants, they have three tenants. There's a total of 12 cars between just those two buildings, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, and one of my tenants who's a lifelong, been there for 16 years as well, they're both elderly, okay, on the first floor. So when Mr. Vasquez had called in earlier and said that he, he can't find, that's now, and that's been going on for years since he's been a lifelong tenant, since I've owned this property. But I just want the, the board to understand that to hear saying that 44 units, you can't mandate that they can't have a car. Okay, and I don't know who's going to want to live on Shrewsbury Street and not have a car to have the access to all the other amenities that are all around the city of Worcester. So I don't, I don't, I just don't believe that part of it. I just don't. What protects the residents that live there, that have lived there? Where do they go to park? They can't park in the city parking lot. They can barely park on one side of the house. And on the right side of Rizzo Court, as you enter from Shrewsbury Street, is the only side that they can park. They do park on the other side now, but once snow comes, there's nowhere to park now. So I don't understand how you can think getting out of the back of that lot where they want to propose 17 spots and then have an overlay, it's going to be beyond a congestion problem. But more in particular, when baseball runs and football runs, people do park there. How are you going to get in and out of there? I, I don't, I don't understand how, if you can vision this, how you can tell 44 units that you're not going to have a car, and maybe not even more than one. I, I get the concept. I'm not trying to stifle business or, or any type of commercial, but I, I'm, I'm puzzled in thinking that you're going to mandate that people are not going to park, get a car, that they're going to live there? And then what about the rights of the people that currently do live there? Is there anything the city or the zoning board is going to take into effect? And then again, when the families want to come down and watch their children play? How do they get in and out of there? If you have that traffic study, I'm going to just say, go on record that I don't, they're not taking into effect the activity of the park. They're not taking activity of all the, all the participants that are going to be used in the park between April through the fall. Okay, because as we now know, and many know, we don't.
Can I, can I ask for this to wrap up, please? It's a little repetitive.
Yeah. Well, it's repetitive on, on one end, but I just want the board to understand that, that the traffic study and the outreach has, I've never been notified by anybody, Mr. Bornstein or anyone to that effect. So I, I hope that the board can take that into effect of the safety issues as well as the residents and the, and those that want to use the, the field. That will be done hopefully soon. Thank you.
Thank you. We definitely want to hear from folks. And also, we want to make sure that there's, that we're on item number three of 11. So I'm also, we have other people that need to speak on it. I'll just say really quickly, again, the, the applicant is responsible for a traffic study for their property. So they're, the, they're not responsible for ensuring that people who are currently maybe parking illegally on their property get, to continue to maybe park illegally on their property, or like, or park in a parking lot that's for the city. That's not the applicant's problem. What is the applicant's problem is the, is, is accommodating the people that may or may not live in this, should it move forward. So I just, I want to be, I want to be clear that, like, the traffic study is saying that currently it is a full commercial building. Commercial buildings, as most of us know, we go to a commercial, we go to someplace, we either go to see a doctor, we see a service, and we leave, we go and we leave. There's more people coming and going than if you go to your house, you go to your house, you stay at your house, you leave to go to work or whatever. So the, the traffic study is simply using logic to say that fewer people will be coming and going in a residential, in a residential setting where somebody goes, parks, goes, sleeps at night, leaves in the morning, than a building where somebody is going and coming to access whatever services they want. So the parking study is not like some magical, like, thing to, like, it's just basic ideas of how people function. That being said, the planning, the planning board absolutely needs to look at this, this, the, the, the use of Court Street, the Court Street, how, like, how big is it? Is it enough for what is being proposed? Can it handle the things that are coming? Certainly, I too have questions about the, the sort of access from the, from the fire department. I think all of those are absolutely questions that should definitely be a part of this conversation and should be in the consideration. And the planning board absolutely should look at that very, very closely. And we, as the zoning board, as the first stop, I can say that I think unanimously believe that, that that needs to be thought of as a part of this process and thought of and, and come into question. We take it into consideration in terms of the zoning aspects of it, but not in terms of that granular, like, can it come and go and all those things? That is in fact a little bit, it's like tangential to us, but a little bit outside. So I just want to clarify those pieces for what we are, what we're supposed to look at versus what other people are supposed to look at. I did find, I, I do find it really helpful to note that is right, that there's a Little League. And to George's point about, like, the windows and there's going to be second floor, so I think again, something else for planning to be thinking about, right, we're adding another level, balls will come up. I think those are all, those are all really good questions. And, okay, so I think that those, those are, I just wanted to level set on those pieces. Before I get to you, George, I just want to, oh no, go to you and then we'll, and then I'll see if there's any person who wants to speak. Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm still, I'm still wondering and would ask you if, in order, I, I think by we do, by, by providing sufficient parking, more than what it is, right, more than what you proposed it, it would limit, it would reduce the, the, the traffic issue to a certain point because there's less, less cars coming in and out. point, because there's less, less cars coming in and out. And because it's not only the, the residents who are going to be living there, it's commercial, it's commercial, I mean, businesses in there, that they have trucks loading or, or, or coming in cars to, to do business in there. So the traffic increases, not just because the residents in there now, but there, perhaps, because it's a good project, but perhaps I'm looking at a commitment, or maybe something that you said, we're going to review and see if we can reduce the number of units there to alleviate the, the, the number of parking spaces. Is that what you were considering?
So we've, we're trying to make the project financially viable. That's, that's really the, the, the crux of it at the moment. I can look to the applicant and, and see if, if they're willing to evaluate the layout further, but I would just note that if we reduce the number of units and increase the size of the units, well, then you could easily say, well, now we're going to have bigger units, so there might be two people who are going to live there, there might be families, there might be more of a need for parking. So I think we were very deliberate in terms of the layout of these units to make them smaller, so that they are more attractive to folks that probably won't own a vehicle. I would note, just for you, just to clarify for the record, there are no commercial uses currently proposed for this building. There, there won't be any loading, per se, in terms of a commercial use in the building. And so it would be, based on our traffic analysis, there would be less traffic per day than the existing commercial use. So I, I'm, I, what I can, I mean, I can look to the applicant and, and ask the question, whether they can evaluate potential leasing, parking off-site. There aren't large parking lots adjacent to this, aside from the city lot, which we've evaluated, and that's not possible. We certainly looked at that, because that was the low-hanging fruit, like, oh, there's a parking lot that will be closed at a particular time when the park closes. Unfortunately, you cannot use that for private purposes, despite the fact that there does seem to be some parking in that parking lot on a regular basis, since I drive by there and seen. But regardless, so I hear what you're saying in terms of providing additional off-street parking. The site does not have additional space for parking, so any additional off-street, off-site parking would have to be, you know, meet the, the dimensional requirement under the ordinance, and at this stage, we're not in a position to kind of comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else online that would like to speak? I do want to make sure people are heard, while, again, balancing that with brevity. But I do want to make sure people have a chance. Okay. All right. We are at an interesting place. We're at an interesting place. I think it would be helpful for the applicant, before we, before we make some final decisions, for the applicant to get a sense of how people are thinking about it, and if they're willing to vote for it at this moment, if there's further revisions they would need to vote for it. So before we take a formal vote, so that the applicant can get a full sense-
I appreciate that.
...where we're going, and no one's sort of caught off guard. So if we were going to hold, so this is not the official vote. It is, it is a poll to get a sense of where people are. But if we were to hold the vote based on the application that's before us right now, Board Member Abramov, how would you?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair. Given that I see little or no change in the number of cars coming to this building, maybe even the, the, they're less-
Correct.
And the housing appeal to it, and the fact that I'd love to ditch my car and be able to walk most places, I can support this.
Board Member Cortez.
I'm, I'm puzzled, I have a puzzle in here, you know, and again, because the point, the point I make on, on the available, number of availability of parking spaces. I would be, I would be comfortable for you to have a meeting, a meeting with the neighborhood that we said, a, a, a business, Schuze Street Association Business, which have a great input into that. They may, you may work out, they may come up with suggestions, even better ideas, how to work with you on this here, and get it through. You, you, you get the consensus from the, from the neighborhood, the business association and everything else. I don't think you would have a problem, you know, because they, they would, they help to resolve the, the main issues. They may, they may buy into what you propose, the way you propose. I, I would say that, I would say that I would feel comfortable, you know, that I, I would give my vote after you meet with, with the others.
Okay. Board Member Torcono.
I'm all for it.
Okay. Board Member Sacco.
We no.
It sounds like you have two, you have one maybe, based on a meeting, one no, you obviously can only get one no.
Sure.
I'm also, I will say, I'm, I'm also, I feel very uncomfortable saying yes to this without a better explanation of the commercial space on the front of it. So considering you have a one maybe and a one no, I guess I'll say, I'll encourage you to, to maybe continue, but I will say, I'm in favor of this as a general over thing. I'm, I'm, I want this to move forward. I think this is a great space for micro-units, and because they're affordable, there's some other things. So in the meantime, I think also, per Board Member Cortez, have a, a sort of meeting, so if it's okay with the applicant, I'm going to make a suggestion to have the, have you come back before us. I think the January 12th is not enough time for the staff, if that's, if that's what I heard correctly. Is that correct? Or is January 12th enough time for the next?
Through the chair. So the next meeting is December 29th, and then we have January. So I don't see any issue with January.
January's okay. Okay. So if, if the-
That gives the applicant enough time to hold a community meeting, if that's something that they're interested in doing. I know that has been requested.
Take your time.
So, Mr. Chair, we would respectfully request the, excuse me, the, the continuance.
January 12th, okay. Is there a motion on the-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve-
No, continue. You're going to continue to January 12th.
What's that?
We're asking for a continuance.
Continuance.
There's not enough votes.
Are we making a motion to continue this to-
January 12th.
For 172, 174?
Yes.
Schuze Street. I'd like to make a motion to continue it to January 12th. And is there an extension of the-
February 3rd.
And an extension to February 3rd.
Is there a second?
Second, a motion.
On the motion, Board Member Abramov?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
Board Member Sacco?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can we take a break?
Yes.
Through the chair, if we could just clarify, so there's no further notice, so if you did receive a notice, there wouldn't be a subsequent notice. The next meeting on the item will be held on January 12th, 2026. Could you feel free to reach out to-
I'd like, is there a motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at eight o'clock.
Hi, Bud.
Hello, lady.
How are you?
Bud, how are you?
I'm so good. What's item number four?
I know, I, I rule one hundred percent.
Oh, no! Well, I talked to your wife today. She was very pleasant. Oh, she came with? Oh, yay!
She told me that the party was-
Oh, I mean, she told me she wasn't going to come, so. Sure, sure. Yeah, but they're not proposing any parking. Oh, you're saying for the underneath, the underneath? Sure, sure. Are they, have them, have them, we're sorry for that. One hundred percent. Yeah. Well, I would also say that. Yeah. Yeah. But that's a concern, right? The board needs to take this, because they're not going to be super pleased with the reason they're not there. They're not even going to be happy. Oh, Dave, yeah? Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, but the whole thing is, this is what, like, this is what they're here for. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You bet. All right. Well, yeah, all right. Well, a few more. A few more. Yes. We have quick to tell, though. Do you realize what?
I realized the Eagles played tonight. Let me get some water. Do I have two minutes to get water?
Yeah.
We're going to ask the folks online to reconfirm themselves in a second, as soon as George is back. For those online, if you could just, Board Member Torcono, if you could just confirm yourself?
Yeah.
Board Member Sacco? Sorry, he's, we don't need him for this item, I guess. Can somebody get Michelle? Oh, she's still in the bathroom?
She definitely ran her out.
If 2628 Woodland Street could be ready to go as soon as we get started, that would be great. What? Oh. Somebody could get Mark. No, it's okay. We're not ready for you yet. I just said if you can be ready to go as soon as Michelle gets back.
Yeah.
The RG5, yeah. Oh, yeah, this one. Oh, my wife is going to be so sad.
She might be in there. We could start?
Yeah, technically, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's get started.
Who's Matt?
Matt.
Board Member Sacco, are you, are you back?
Yeah, come here.
Great. Yeah, let's get started.
Okay.
Twenty, oh, sorry, I got a, 2628 Woodland Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mark Bornstein, attorney of the law firm, Prince LaBelle, here in Worcester, representing the applicant. This evening, I'm joined remotely by Abelys Mannion, the architect for the project, and Jamie Leibowitz, he is the principal owner of the property. We're seeking a variance with respect to the minimum lot area to provide two additional residential units on the ground floor. Folks are probably familiar with this building on Woodland Street. It's, it's previously, obviously, as you can see from the photos, used for commercial purposes. The applicant has renovated the upper stories of the building. I went to the property the other day, and it looks fantastic. I encourage folks to stop by if they have not already. And similar to, you might have heard earlier, in terms of determining the best use of the property, the applicant determined that a residential unit on the ground floor would be most desirable for purposes of a renovation project. So this project will be subject to a demolition delay waiver similar to other historic buildings. A lot of the facade treatments and the questions from staff are going to be dictated by the Historic Commission. So, but with that, I would, I would also like to kind of provide some additional context with respect to the findings. So this property is located on a corner lot on Woodland Street and Kingsbury, which effectively squeezes the lot, and the, the existing building is, is located on the lot fairly close to the boundaries of the lot. The adjacent properties are occupied by existing buildings. Unfortunately, there's no additional lot for them to add to the, to the existing lot in order to comply with the minimum lot area requirements. And so therefore, we are, we're seeking the relief because of the, the layout of the lot and the building on the lot, in the context of those adjacent streets. In terms of the, the little enforcement, if, if the ordinance were to be enforced, they would not be able to provide these residential units, which obviously represents a financial hardship for the applicant. They've solicited potential lessies for these ground floor units. They did not find a significant reception from potential tenants, and so that, that led them to pivot and seek to lease, renovate these and then lease them for residential units. As noted in the, in the findings submitted, this is a historic building. This would allow for the adaptive reuse of these ground floor commercial units to provide additional residential units, which is certainly one of the purposes and the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is to provide additional residential units in this residential neighborhood. And the relief that's being sought is a minimum necessary to, to address the statutory hardship. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board staff has.
Okay. City staff.
Sure. Through the chair, this is Michelle Smith, again, in the city's planning division. In front of you this evening, so request for a variance from the lot area requirement for a multifamily high-rise. This is an existing multifamily high-rise. The lot area requirement that we have is based on the number of units, so there's additional square footage for each unit. The applicant's proposing to add two new residential units. Non-residential uses don't have similarly cumulative or additive requirement in that way, so the fact that these existing storefronts were historically used for commercial purposes didn't require additional lot area. So now that the applicant's making the conversion, or proposing to make the conversion to residential, that's where we see this new requirement coming into play. So again, what's there is a six-unit multifamily high-rise. The two additional dwelling units that are proposed on the, the ground floor, where these historic storefronts have been, are a two-bedroom unit and then a one-bedroom unit, but they're, I would say, generally larger in size. Each of them have a direct entry from Woodland Street through those kind of historic storefront-looking facades, and then they also have an interconnection into the common corridor or main stair that serves all the other residential units. The building is a historic building, as you can see from the pictures, or driving past the property or taking a walk through the neighborhood. And there's an existing kind of rear alley that's proposed to remain in, in association with the site. Parking, in terms of parking, there are no additional parking requirements, because the existing commercial uses technically require more space in terms of parking than the residential units, so the change to the residential use doesn't require parking. So, so we just spent a long time talking about parking, just want to clarify that for this particular case. The location is at the corner of Woodland and Kingsbury, and this, you can see, it's located right at the intersection there. It's in an RG5 zoning district. It's quite close and well-served by public transit, the nearest stop being located-
We're gonna ask the folks online to reconfirm themselves in a second as soon as George is back. All right, for those online, if you could just, Board Member Torcono, if you could just confirm yourself.
Yeah.
Board Member Sacco. Sorry, we don't need him for this item, I guess. Can somebody get Michelle? Oh, she's still in the bathroom? If 2628 Woodland Street could be ready to go as soon as we get started, that would be great. What? Oh. Somebody could get Mark. No, it's okay, we're not ready for you yet, I just said if you can be ready to go as soon as Michelle gets back.
Yeah.
The RG5, yeah. Oh yeah, this one. Oh, my wife is gonna be so sad.
She might be in there. We could start?
Yeah, technically, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's get started.
Who's Matt?
Board Member Sacco, are you, are you back?
Yeah, come here.
Great. Yeah, let's get started.
Okay.
Twenty, oh, sorry, I gotta... 2628 Woodland Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, Mark Bornstein, Attorney of the Law from Prince Labele here in Worcester, representing the applicant. This evening, I'm joined remotely by Abellas Manion, the architect for the project, and Jamie Lebowitz, he is the principal owner of the property. We're seeking a variance with respect to the minimum lot area to provide two additional residential units on the ground floor. Folks are probably familiar with this building on Woodland Street. It's previously, obviously, as you can see from the photos, used for commercial purposes. The applicant has renovated the upper stories of the building. I went to the property the other day and it looks fantastic, I encourage folks to stop by if they have not already. Similar to, you might have heard earlier, in terms of determining the best use of the property, the applicant determined that a residential unit on the ground floor would be most desirable for purposes of a renovation project. So, this project will be subject to a demolition delay waiver similar to other historic buildings. A lot of the facade treatments and the questions from staff are gonna be dictated by the Historic Commission. So, but with that, I would, I would also like to kind of provide some additional context with respect to the findings. So, this property is located on a corner lot on Woodland Street and Kingsbury, which effectively squeezes the lot, and the existing building is, is located on the lot fairly close to the boundaries of the lot. The adjacent properties are occupied by existing buildings. Unfortunately, there's no additional lot for them to add to the, to the existing lot in order to comply with the minimum lot area requirements. And so, therefore, we are, we're seeking their relief because of the layout of the lot and the building on the lot in the context of those adjacent streets. In terms of the, the little enforcement, if, if the ordinance were to be enforced, it would not be able to provide these residential units, which obviously represents a financial hardship for the applicant. They've solicited potential less ease for these ground floor units. They did not find a significant reception from potential tenants, and so that, that led them to pivot and seek to lease, renovate these and then lease them for residential units. As noted in the, in the findings submitted, this is a historic building. This would allow for the adaptive reuse of these ground floor commercial units to provide additional residential units, which is certainly one of the purposes and the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is to provide additional residential units in this residential neighborhood. And the relief that's being sought is a minimum necessary to, to address the statutory hardship. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board staff has.
Okay, city staff.
Sure, through the chair, this is Michelle Smith, again, in the city's planning division. In front of you this evening, so request for a variance from the lot area requirement for a multifamily high-rise. This is an existing multifamily high-rise. The lot area requirement that we have is based on the number of units, so there's additional square footage for each unit. The applicant's proposing to add two new residential units. Non-residential uses don't have similarly cumulative or additive requirement in that way. So, the fact that these existing storefronts were historically used for commercial purposes didn't require additional lot area. So, now that the applicant's making the conversion or proposing to make the conversion to residential, that's where we see this new requirement coming into play. So, again, what's theirs is a six-unit multifamily high-rise. The two additional dwelling units that are proposed on the, the ground floor where these historic storefronts have been are a two-bedroom unit and then a one-bedroom unit, but they're, I would say, generally larger in size. Each of them have a direct entry from Woodland Street through those kind of historic storefront-looking facades. And then they also have an interconnection into the common corridor or main stair that serves all the other residential units. The building is a historic building, as you can see from the pictures or driving past the property or taking a walk through the neighborhood. And there's an existing kind of rear alley that's proposed to remain in, in association with the site. Parking, in terms of parking, there are no additional parking requirements because the existing commercial uses technically require more space in terms of parking than the residential units. So, the change to the residential use doesn't require parking. So, so we just spent a long time talking about parking, just wanna clarify that for this particular case. The location is at the corner of Woodland and Kingsbury, and this, you can see it's located right at the intersection there. It's in an RG5 zoning district, it's quite close and well-served by public transit. The nearest stop being located about 100 and change feet away. It's in a managed growth area within the citywide long-range plan, so an area that's intended to encourage additional production of housing density and that it has a potential to, because of the location along this transportation corridor, to serve additional residents. Because of the historic nature of the building, any alterations to the exterior will require a demolition delay waiver from the Historic Commission. The applicant's already seek some of, sought some of those approvals, but depending on exactly the scope, some additional approvals may be required. In terms of the comments that we have, I would say that the, while the property is located in a residential neighborhood, it's a dense residential neighborhood. The zoning that we have today does not permit what existed kind of naturally over time, including things like commercial storefronts and retail or other types of uses. So, there's basically an existing non-conformity that's on the, the ground level today. The citywide long-range plan is encouraging actually us to bring these types of uses back into the fabric of our zoning that for a long time was kind of segmented and separated, just sort of tried to keep use A away from use B and create, you know, these areas where only businesses were allowed and only residences were allowed. And we've seen and heard from community members that these are important amenities that they would like to have in their neighborhoods. And so, the citywide long-range plan encourages us to kind of revert our zoning and allow for things like this to continue. So, just wanna, want to clarify that. So, while this isn't currently allowed in terms of a zoning perspective, it is a privileged non-conformity in terms of the site. By right, there are no other options for the applicant for residential, only to allow the kind of continued use of that area. They could propose potentially an accessory dwelling unit, but that would be the limit to which they would be able to do that. The applicant should talk a little bit about, and I don't believe I, I heard the comments, but I apologize because I stepped in just a moment late. Should talk about the extensive glazing along the, the front elevation. Staff just wanted to understand a bit how that interplays with the residential units. It's unusual to see, and while we are appreciative and want to see the glass kind of keep the historic features to the building, wanna understand how that will relate to the, the unusual circumstance for a residential unit to have that within the unit itself. And we're wondering if instead the units were looked at to be of a smaller size to preserve those areas as the storefront or as a amenity space or kind of common space. In particular, an understanding that there is a desire to convert the building to have additional residential units. I think the storefront that, for staff at least, is most significant is the one that's at or closer to the intersection. And if there's a way to retain that and potentially reduce the size of the existing unit, or sorry, of the proposed unit, that one is a proposed two-bedroom unit, so it's a larger-sized unit. And considering if there might be an option to reduce that and have that, that potential storefront remain or consolidate those units or reconfigure them somehow. So, there was a question that we had had, that again, I'm not sure if I missed the answer to that. And then the, the final thing that I really wanna call attention to is that the applicant's requesting a variance, and it's generally the board's policy and part of the regulations to require that anytime a variance is involved, that we have a field verified survey. So, the applicant has provided a plot plan, but that plot plan does not include field verification of those measurements. And so, I wanna just caveat that the board should consider whether you're willing to waive that requirement or not. The applicant is seeking that waiver. Again, that's a waiver that staff don't generally recommend that the board grant because the variance is specific to the amount of relief that is proposed down to the, the square foot. So, we do have recommended conditions of approval on page three, should the board move to vote. But you'll see at the, the top that we had recommended that the application be postponed previously to allow for submission of the survey. The conditions really talk about minimal things related to light fixtures, and the conditions do not require that the existing storefront be retained. So, if that's something that the board was interested or wanted to explore, that would, these conditions would need to be modified accordingly. Thank you.
So...
If you have a response, could you speak a bit slower and louder so those interested parties have a chance to hear you?
Certainly. So, as staff noted, we are requesting the waivers listed in the memorandum. In addition, I would just note for the board that, recognizing that it's not common for waivers to be granted with respect to the, the plan requirements. In this particular instance, similar to what we saw, and not that I wanna start making a habit of this, but similar to 37 Stoneland Road, when the relief that's being sought doesn't relate to a setback or a type of measurement that needs to be exact. In this instance, we have a plot plan that shows a 7,000-square-foot lot, but that is then verified with the legal description in the deed, which shows the meets and bounds as being 100 by 70 square, excuse, 70 by 100 feet. So, we have that verification, albeit not a surveyor, a PLS stamping the plan. Certainly, recognize the comment from staff and don't, I don't wanna start making a habit of requesting these variants, these waivers associated with these plan requirements. In terms of the glazing, it's my understanding in discussions with, with the architect, and she's joining remotely, so she could certainly jump in to the extent that she has additional information to add. It's our understanding that there's been meetings with the Historic Commission Preservation Planner, Michelle Johnstone, regarding what the window treatments would be. That would be part of the ultimate submission, but certainly there would be additional wood or different types of treatment to provide additional buffer between the, the exterior and the particular unit itself. So, it wouldn't just be a large glossy window as it currently sits in a commercial sense. Certainly, any type of modification of the windows would be driven by the historic nature of the building. So, I believe Ms. Johnstone is evaluating and researching what the, what windows previously looked like before it was the superette or, I forget what the market was called. So, that's being taken into consideration with respect to the project.
Did you, did you get your, do you have a particular question? If you do, you need to just come forward and say it into the microphone, which actually, this would be the moment to do so. Yes, go ahead, please, just state your name and city of, or town of residence. And we'll try to, if you have a particular question to get answered, we'll, I'll do our best answer as well.
Hello, good evening, everybody who's lasted this long. I rushed here without supper, I really wish coffee were available. I parked and probably am getting a ticket in the last available space as I rushed in to be here in time for 5:30. And I would like to commend you on speaking clearly and slowly enough facing us. And I realize you've got invisible members and we've got folks from all over Worcester interested because they just pop up as voices out of the woodwork. For some of us who find it confusing, I have not been in a city hearing for maybe 40 years, since I was on the Citizen Advisory Committee for Community Development Block Grant Funds when we met in the proper council chambers. So, this has been a reminder of democracy at work, and I appreciate that Worcester still has some. I am Janice, last name is Morgan Jones. The bank and I share the property at 35 Woodland Street, which is diagonal to the corner of what I think of as Phil and Maria's building. So, I got the letter as a property owner within 300 feet of this well-established handsome brick building. And when I came there and closed on my house on May 1, 1984, the building was long-established in the neighborhood. The spruce tree on the corner, which I hope, like, I'll get out that you leave, must have been some hundreds years old then. And I was closer to 30, and now I'm closer to 80. I have been a resident of my house since May of 1984, with a couple of brief times in Virginia, because I'm a Virginian and family requirements. In the last five years of my mother's life, I was away. Phil and Maria ran Woodland Street Superette. I saw a convenience store in the mom-and-pop style when I first moved there and quickly realized it was a neighborhood store. The man and woman whom I did not know and had not gone in the store because I had a house for the first time in my life and it's two-family, and I was pretty busy on my little postage stamp of land. But I saw this handsome building that keeps being referred to as high-rise, I guess because it's four floors. But the residential neighborhood, which is this stretch of Woodland Street, is very old. My two-family gable into the street has a full attic, which is not built out. People keep asking to rent it because housing is so scarce. It's an attic, there's no kitchen, there's no bathroom, there's no heat, there's no second egress. And perhaps I can afford to build it out and age in place because I live on the second floor and rent to tenants. This was a quiet, community mom-and-pop. They closed at a variable time in the evening, 8, 8-ish, 9 maybe on a weekend. They were there six days a week, they closed on Sundays, a lot of us appreciate that. There was very little traffic to the store because it was a neighborhood center, and people walked there clearly with more money than me or less car than me, my 2,000 Honda is the one out here waiting for the ticket, because they bought their groceries for the week, I think, or something. And I would go over later and visit with Phil and Maria and buy a Coca-Cola, but I never had the money for mom-and-pop prices because it functioned like a convenience store. But when you were inside, it was like an old country store that my parents ran for six years in Virginia. It had a very nostalgic appeal, they kept it clean, they kept it organized. It was the most acceptable commercial space in a residential neighborhood, I can imagine. And the other one, which is, I think, must be the smaller one, and I think I heard they envisioned this one becoming two bedrooms, and the other commercial space, which has been vacant since prior to 1984, would be retrofitted and be one-bedroom. Do I have the numbers of bedroom units right?
That's correct, yes.
The six units above and, and the 2628 businesses, because that's a firewall.
Yep.
So, you really have two buildings in one brick structure with two front doors that lead into closed hallways. And the second and third and fourth floor on each side hold one unit each. I would point out that those are four-bedroom units.
So, those are, those are not before us right now.
I realize that, but, but that building that is before us on the ground floor is now going to have four times six, 24 new tenants in the neighborhood because the building in the, in the residential spaces has been vacant for at least 10, if not 15, years. And whoever is buying it, and my first question is, who is buying it? And is it a partnership, and are they from Boston or are they from Worcester? Because I have seen signs on the building, pardon me, for the property management, for inquiry to rent, and all of those tracked back to Boston. And I have been told by manager on site that the new owner is in Worcester and somehow related to Phil and Maria. And they had decided to put the building on the market as they aged. Phil's health failed quicker than the building sold. He died, Maria sold it. I'm happy, mind you, with the fact that it's being renovated in a quality style and being reused for housing because Worcester needs and housing is scarce and prices are expensive. And these are nice and new and clean, each four-bedroom apartment, because I was invited on two different occasions by two different managers to run upstairs and see it. So, if that quality is replicated on the ground floor, I haven't a qualm about that at all. But this is the only letter I got, and I read it carefully the second time and made my notes in blue.
Okay.
Then I went back and put my questions in red, maybe big and bold because maybe at 80 you don't see as well. But I wanted to be a little more cogent up here, and I didn't realize we were all these hours and then this nice fellow...
So, just, what, what are the questions in red that you have?
Question is, who is actually owning it as an individual or a partnership? Are they based in Boston or Worcester or both? And can one person be based in both places if it's not a group? That's the ownership question.
Okay.
The second one, I think, might have been answered, but once again...
It's okay, just ask it again, that's fine.
Okay. It is, I'm trying to be, and it's too late, and I haven't had supper, and I'd be back, I wish I'll had coffee here.
No, no problem.
Who is Abellas Di Manon, the person who made the application? Is that you?
No.
Or is that the new owner?
That's the, that's the owners.
Is that an individual? It looks like one person, I can't tell male or female.
You can, you can, you'd ask it to me, they'll answer it when you're done.
Respectfully to you, sir.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay, so that's the first question.
So, the question's about ownership, is there any other questions?
Are the parking waivers already in place with Phil and Maria? Because it, it, there's no parking zip nada.
Yes, they're already, because it's an existing, pre, pre, pre-existing...
The whole neighborhood is old, and there is dense housing and very little parking anyway. The thing is, there are already tenants there, and because they're being dropped off and picked up, we've got traffic issues, which I understand are not yours.
Correct.
But in terms of public safety and increasing the number of available attractive, presumably affordable housing, it's also creating a bit of a mess. If they're going to be 24, and the target market, I was told initially, was families or students, not a good mix, but apparently they are students. So, they are walking to WPI from, from, we are between Worcester City Hospital...
They're probably walking to Clark, it's probably Clark and...
They're walking that away, and Clark is that away. I came to Worcester to go to Clark, and you don't come out the door and go that way. Worcester goes, Woodland Street goes straight across May Street and now truncates in the center of the Clark University campus per agreement with the city and the university some years ago. We're at the other end, much closer to Old Worcester City Hospital, which is now Busy Busy Family Health Center, UMass Memorial Community Health Link.
Okay, can we, can we wrap up the question, please?
Okay, so, so they're gonna be at least three more tenants. If there are two bedrooms in a unit, and we're assuming one person per bedroom, three more tenants, that's the question. That's the second question, and I thought there were three, but if you'll give me a tiny second...
Okay.
I know it's late, but I waited through Shrewsbury Street with a great deal...
It's okay, I just, I wanna get to your questions, because it is, it is, we need to actually...
Ownership.
The ownership, the number of, the number of people that would be in this space, and the parking, the answer is that it's grandfathered.
So, we know that. The, the work they've done so far on the exterior is a great deal of improvement. I'm happy to see the Pepsi-Cola sign for Woodland Street would superette go away. The exterior lighting is better than the city's street lighting. It is discreet, it lights the area much better. The city energy-efficient things give you intensity right here and leave us in pools of darkness. This street is a city bus route, it is an ambulance route, it is a fire truck route. City residents use it as in highway, highway speeds, and some of us live there. It is essentially a residential neighborhood, and I found out when I got the letter that my two-family house built in 1890 has the same residential commercial zoning as Phil and Maria's building. These folks are looking to make it better, but, but there was no meeting, I got this.
That's the standard way that it gets done.
And, and the rest of the owners around there typically don't live in the buildings, they are two and three or subdivided. There's another building that has become high-efficiency apartments in what has been a boarding house.
Yes, it came before us.
And it's spitting distance that away from Phil and Maria, so I'm like looking at two, I'm excited and I'm dismayed simultaneously.
That, that impulse, I totally understand.
Because people who live there have all of those concerns, and so...
Yes, for sure.
I wanna be supportive. It looks better, they showed me beautiful apartments inside. I trust the quality will extend to the ground level. I'm less clear what the architect is gonna do with those big glass storefronts that come in this way to the door, since it's a historic building. My house is on the Macris, the one next to it is. The whole neighborhood was surveyed by the city...
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that you wrap up, please.
I've done, I'm finished, but I welcome questions answered so I can flip and hear them.
I'll, I'll, I'll make sure to convey the answers.
You've been excellent all night, and I'm sorry I'm old enough to be mouthy at, at a city hearing.
May we all, may we all get the opportunity?
But some of this is ridiculous, because if you sit here and the people chat, chat, chat out there louder than us...
They can't hear anything.
They could be shuffled along or something.
Ownership question.
Very much.
No problem.
To all of you, all of you, and your patience and your clarity in answering, please, and thank you.
Yes, no, thank you, this is Morgan Jones, for, for your comments. So, in terms of the questions, the ownership is Wits Woodland LLC.
Woodland LLC is the...
Is that related to Phil and Maria?
I, I do not know the answer to that, it is... I do not know the answer to that. It is-
Is Abellas Manon related to Phil and Maria?
So Abellas Manon is the architect, so she submitted the application.
The application was submitted by the architect, whose name is on it.
Find in the city papers if one had an ability to plow through them who the new actual owners are. That are Woodland Street LLC Limited Liability Corporation?
So Jamie Leibowitz, who is on, is one of the managers of the LLC.
So one of the managers is on the-
Jamie that invited you to see the building from Boston?
So Jamie from the building, and since it's a people, it might be more than somebody who also lives here. My suggestion would be to contact the person you talk to if you have questions about the actual-
Hello, but he and I said Jamie and Janice, and he said, "You want to see him?"
Okay, so yes, so just talk to Jamie if you have questions.
Hello, Jamie, what's the number for that?
We'll make sure to get it after, we'll make sure, Mark will give you his contact info to make sure that you can get in touch if you have any particular questions. There's three rooms, so presumably three people will live in this if it gets approved. So there's three rooms, we're responsible for the first floor. And the question about the lights, you should talk to the, about the, sorry, the windows, not the lights, the windows, you should talk to the planning. That's not particularly before us, but they are going to have, they're talking to the city to ensure that it's with, it looks historic to the thing.
So there would be three bedrooms in-
There's three, you can't talk offline, but I'll just say really quickly, there's three bedrooms. And how people divide that up is up to them.
Could we also be given the date of the Historic Commission meeting with the architect?
If you are a butter, you will get a letter in the mail from the Historic Commission when it comes forward. That's, you will get a letter similar to that for the Historic. And if you have questions, you can also talk to the Planning Division about that question. Okay, is there anybody else here for 2628 Woodland Street?
And through the chair, I think the architect has their hand raised, so I just want to clarify if they wanted to add anything.
Do you need to add anything? Is there anything else you want to add?
Well, if the board has questions, then she can answer it.
Yeah, okay. I'll just move really quickly.
Mr. Chair, if you could just give us one second, Cable Services, I just accidentally muted you. If you could unmute, I was trying to unmute the other applicant, and then they lowered their hand, so.
Okay.
Perfect, we're good.
Yes, I'm going to go, okay. Just really quickly. So just to be clear, I live in this neighborhood. My wife grew up in public housing on Kingsbury Street. She was very sad to hear about the public convenience going away, but it has been away for a long time now. It's closed for some time, but that was her local store, that's where she got all of her food. So, you know, I definitely understand, but also, so obviously all of us would like to keep it the way it is, but that's not how it works. This is a perfectly acceptable move. My, I will say, I'm not comfortable moving this forward without, without, I'm not currently comfortable moving it forward without the field survey with lot dimensions. So I'm currently a no until we get that. Because it's dealing with the variance for lot requirements. It's one thing for somebody who had a place burned down and sort of a family. But since this is a developer moving it in, I think it should, we should have a, that should be the local thing, but otherwise I'm fine with this. Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chair, would it be acceptable to the board and/or staff to make that a condition of approval to deliver the survey?
Through the chair, the purpose of the survey is to verify that the relief is the minimum necessary. So I think that sort of defeats the purpose. Because then if the survey shows something different, then they're back for an amendment. I'm not really sure that that's, it's not the purpose of the regulation. It's the decision of the board ultimately, but just in terms of what the purpose of that is.
Understood, I understand the comment. I would just note for the board that we have a plot plan that shows 7,000 square feet, and the deed also confirms 7,000 square feet. So I'm fairly confident that it's going to be 7,000 square feet, cannot say for certain. But I'm certainly willing to make that a condition of approval if that's acceptable to the board and staff.
I will ask that question to other board members as they move forward. Board Member Brahmoff.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. And also, as long as you're willing to take the risk, if the survey is anything different, then that's on you, and you have to go through the cost of coming back and everything. So I can approve this subject to a field-verified survey with lot dimensions that are equal or greater than what's there.
Board Member Campenello.
Through the chair, I'm in complete agreement with Board Member Abramoff.
Board Member Cortez.
Through the chair. I think this is a good project to rehabilitize this building. It's going down, and if the work is not down, yeah, it's going to come down in a few more years. So it is good for the neighborhood, and that sense, you know, helps the neighborhood with this project there. However, yes, I wouldn't be in favor of it. Depending, you know, the survey to be done. And again, I'm with Mr. Abramoff. And yeah, depending, whatever happens, then would be your issue.
Board Member Torcono.
Same here, I'm in favor, and as long as the applicant is going to be liable for the field exams if it comes negative.
Board Member Sacco.
No additional comment.
Okay. Well, considering I'm overruled, is there a motion?
Through the chair, I just want to make sure that we capture-
Yes, please.
...stated. So how would that read? In terms of, there is currently the waiver for a field-verified survey with lot dimensions?
So I think we would, that's a great question. My understanding, based on what I have heard and the staff can confirm, is that we wouldn't waive that waiver, but we would say is that it's a condition of requirement that we get a field-verified survey with the lot mentions that are equal to or less than the relief sought of 3,250 square feet.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it would be equal then or greater to.
Greater to, yes, sorry.
You want more, but if there's less, they are coming back for an amendment.
Right, certainly, that's right. I apologize.
So you would be striking waiver one, because you're not waiving that requirement. And you're going to require that as a new condition, 1B, should be to provide the field-verified survey reflecting the existing conditions of the lot, including the lot area, which must be equal to or greater than 7,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
On that, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
To move.
On the motion to close, Board Member Brahmoff? Board Member Campenello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez? And Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
Is there a motion on 2628 Woodland Street?
Yes, although first to the applicant for the other two through six waivers, do you request them?
Yes, we would respect the request.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for 26 to 28 Woodland Street for a variance for relief of 3,250 square feet from the 10,250 square foot minimum lot area requirement for a multifamily high-rise dwelling in an RG5 zone to include the recommendations by staff on page three of six of the memo, including the addition of 1B regarding the field survey. And the removal of, and the waivers as requested by the applicant, removing waiver number one and on page three of six of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
I do second the motion.
On the motion, Board Member Abramoff?
Yes.
Board Member Campenello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. So this motion is approved, they just, they have to give us a few things before they can move forward. And if you have any questions, please just get the Planning Division's contact. It's also on the form that you have, and you'll get the same letter in the mail for the Historic Commission. No problem. All right, next up is 9 Chadwick Street.
Yeah, through the chair, our contact information, including the business card, is sitting at the head table with the agenda here for anyone who's interested.
Okay, I'll just ask that you take the conversation outside. But 9 Chadwick Street, if you could come forward, please. Go ahead when you're ready, just state your name and city or town of residence.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members and the staff. For the record, my name is Nash Cordier. I am the engineer who did the plans and also representing the petitioner Cosma Cania. The subject property is located at 9 Chadwick, and which is a pre-existing non-conforming two-family. The proposals also maintain the two-family current zoning on it. We are here for relief of this site setback, which is required as an eight-foot minimum setback. We are pre-existing 3.6 on it right now, and-
So you're not here for a setback, you're here for, to extend or alter, change a privilege pre-existing?
Correct, yeah.
So it's pre-existing?
Pre-existing, yeah. And their addition, again, we are maintaining the same zoning, which is two-family. The proposed addition is a three-story addition, which is roughly about 12.8 and by 24 inches, which is about a little over 300. So it's under 1,000 square feet. And apart from that, there's hardly any changes to the, except inside interior changes. There's no impact on the front elevation of the building. And we're here for that.
Okay, city staff.
Through the chair, this is Amy Bethleth for the Planning Division. This is for 9 Chadwick Street in the RL7 zoning district. Presently on premise is a two-family dwelling. The applicant seeks to construct an addition that will extend the footprint to meet the existing rear wall of the dwelling and create more living space on each floor. They are seeking a special permit to extend, alter, or change a privileged, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And the existing structure is pre-existing, non-conforming with regards to the side yard setback, as stated. They provide eight feet. Eight feet is required for a two-family dwelling where they are providing 3.3 feet. And for the front yard setback, 20 feet is required for a two-family dwelling, and 15 feet is provided. The applicant is extending the length of the structure along that side yard setback, which triggers the need for the special permit. The property was issued a building permit for alterations and renovations to the structure on July 18, 2025. Inspection services identified additional work was occurring and advised the applicant to cease and desist all work since the permit did not include the addition to the rear of the building. The addition was found to extend an existing non-conformity at the side yard setback, which required the special permit. This addition will add approximately 311 square feet to the first and second floor and a total of 633 square feet in total. By right alternatives to this approval would be to renovate within the existing footprint. There are no by-right options to expand the pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And the applicant could also construct an ADU by right. I can take any questions as needed.
Okay. Is anybody here for 9 Chadwick Street? Yes, please come forward, just state your name and city or town of approval. If you could just step away from the podium there so that the person can testify. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Nordquist, I live at 10 Chadwick Street, across the street from 9. I noticed they were building this addition. As far as I know, this has always been a single-family house. I don't know how all of a sudden it became a two-family. I've been on the street for about 25 years. It's always a single family, as far as I was always told. I was hoping maybe you guys could talk to the assessors and go back 10 years or 20 years and see what it was. How everyone I know said it was a single family. Now all of a sudden it's a two-family. That's the first question I got. So as far as the side yard setback, well, the original part of the structure was pre-existing, non-conforming. Then they added on a new foundation in the rear, kept the same line, but on the boundary, near the boundary line or on the boundary line, which needed, I believe, eight feet. So I don't know how that happened. On new construction, not a remodel, new construction. Looks to me like it's to turn it into a, their ultimate plan is to turn it into a three-family. I see a gas rack from the Eversource, they rigged up for three meters. So I don't know what the third meter is for, if it's a two-family. And then if it was a two-family all along, I think the original permit they pulled in July was for a rear egress. If it was a two-family, wouldn't it already have the rear egress? And then I see, so the rear, you see the footprint on each floor, they're going on like, actually what, 300 square feet? So I'm guessing, you know, they're making the units bigger without, that's not what the permit read. Okay?
Yes, that's why they got a cease and desist, because it wasn't with the-
Okay, I just want to have you guys aware of all my concerns.
Thank you.
This floor. Looks like, I didn't go in, but it looks like this construction on, it looks like they're making a third floor unit, but I'm just a guess, I haven't been in there. Maybe Code has. So as far as the parking, they do have parking area in the back, but the access to it, it's very narrow. It's elevated, and there's no God rail. I know when they push the snow, it goes on the neighbor's land. So I don't know how good that parking area actually is. Because if they go off the edge, they're going to be laying against the neighbor's house. And parking's tight there, because when the city redid the street, they made the sidewalks wide. So now it's basically, it's almost a one-lane road. It's tight, so I have some tenants that park in the street. So the more people you got, and the more units, obviously squeezes all the tenants out of parking spots. So I just want to know if they're following the rules as far as, if it's a single family, how to become a two? And now, is it going to be a three when they're done?
Okay.
So if this is a licensed builder, how do you, he doesn't know that you need a side setback? I don't know, I just think they should make it, not ask for forgiveness, just do it right the first time? So is that what everyone's technique is, is to do this and then say, "Oh, sorry, but can you do me a favor and give me a break?" That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Through the city, do we have a sense, yes, Amy, but you look like you have an answer to these questions.
I do have some answers, and then I'm going to defer to Inspection Services for, if they have any additional information. So I can say that we did reach out to the assessor's office to determine what the use of this property was. And the property card does indicate that this is a two-family dwelling. So we confirmed that information. And so in terms of the permit, and I'm sure that Mr. Horn can speak to this probably better than I can, but my understanding of the original building permit was that it specifically specified that it was for renovations for the interior of the home. And so that's where the discrepancy lied.
Through the chair, excuse me, Dave Horn, Deputy Commissioner. So we've reviewed the property multiple times. We've met with the owners in terms of the use changing to a three-family. And that's not, that may be the ultimate goal in this building for the owners. I think that's something they'd like to entertain in the future. But as far as I can tell and from what they've expressed and how we've permitted it, it's only for a two-family. The rear addition does go upstairs to the third level. But that unit, that space in the third level is going to be interessential with the second floor. So they're going to add some rooms up there, and there's an internal component to that. So as far as it stands, it's going to remain a two-family. And as far as the two-family use goes, when we look at these buildings, you know, from what we can tell, the building's been a two-family for a long time. And under the building code, and the recent building code changes, whatever the current use of the building is during a building code change, the use can continue, unless, of course, it's dangerous. There's no reason to look at this as a dangerous building at all. It's, it looks like to us it's a two-family, it's been a two-family. And we just wanted to get the owner on track with, in terms of his special permit to allow him to get back to work.
Okay.
Through the chair, one more thing. Based on Mr. Horn's description of the fact that the second floor is going to be two floors, if you will, so that does place- if you will, so that does place the building having four bedrooms. So ideally, that would be a family space. As we know, no more than three unrelated people can live together, or it would be considered a lodging house. And so we did put that as a condition in the conditions of approval that this building will not operate as a lodging house.
Board member Brahmoff, did you get a sense of, you were looking it up, so I was looking over your shoulder about when it, do we have a sense of when it converted to?
Yeah, I looked it up, it didn't say. It just had listed as multi-family.
So I'm sorry to say, we don't have an answer for your question about when it converted from a single to a two-family. From the city's perspective and from the plans we have, it looks like a traditional two-family. And so, and that's what we have in the city assessors. So I'm sorry that I don't have a direct answer for you. The best that we could tell from our record-keeping is that it's a two-family and it currently is a two-family. I just wanted to get an answer to your question that I don't have. The other thing I'll say, and I do want to be, I'll let somebody else speak if there's other people, I want to make clear, we absolutely do not, I do not like, the city does not like when you say you're doing one thing and do another. So if you do have any more projects before the city, let this be the last time you come before us and pull a permit for one thing and then do another thing. Like that is absolutely not an acceptable thing to happen. If it's internal, it has to stay internal. You cannot extend a building. So I just want to be very clear about that. Okay, are there other folks who are here for nine Chadwick Street? Yes, please come forward, just state your name and city or town of residence.
Good evening. It's been a long night, huh? My name is Dimitri Laco. I own a property on Chadwick Street, 13 Chadwick Street. And I got to say that that street is full of multi-families. I've looked at the project they're doing and it seems clean. There's a lot of room in the back as far as parking concerned. And I'm happy with the way it's looking. I mean, it's going to add a lot of value to the street and looking forward to see what it's going to look like when it's done.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody online for, if you're online, just press the raise your hand function or star nine. Is anybody else here in person while we're waiting for nine Chadwick Street? Okay, is anybody indicated to be online? Okay, we'll go to, we'll close the public comment on this and go to city, go to, excuse me, board comment. I don't have anything else for this. It's a pre-existing nonconforming. It certainly looks similar to actually my building. So I'm inclined to say yes to it, but I do want to stress again that you should not be building out without a proper permit. That's absolutely something that we take very, very seriously. And, and so just make sure that you're in contact with inspectional services if this does get approved to make sure that everything else is sort of above board.
Yes, sir.
The last thing we, the last thing that should happen is more problems, right?
I understand.
Board member Brahmoff?
I agree. I'll leave it at that.
Board member Cipinello?
Through the chair. I have no problem moving this forward, but I have a question if you will request the waivers on page three of five of the staff memo.
You always want to request the waivers, sort of.
Okay.
Board member Cortez?
Through the chair.
Yep.
I don't either sympathize with projects that come up for permits and they go out and do different things. And then they come back to use us, the sunny board of appeals, to clean up the wrongdoings. I don't appreciate that either. However, it's something that, as far as the request for the permits before us, I don't have a problem.
Board member Torcono?
I strongly echo the sentiment stated by both counselors ahead of me. So he has to take it serious and not come back here with those.
Board member Sacco?
I agree with the rest of the board. The comment.
With that, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
So move.
On the motion to close, board member Brahmoff?
Yes.
Board member Cipinello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on nine Chadwick Street?
I'd like to make a motion on nine Chadwick Street for a special permit to extend, alter, or change a privileged, a privileged pre-existing nonconforming structure, including the recommendations and the waivers on page three of five of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, board member Brahmoff?
Yes.
Board member Cipinello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next up is 1,103 Milbury Street.
Was, was that first round or continued?
No, it's coming forward. We don't have a memo for it.
Oh, okay.
Though explain why.
Great, thank you. Okay.
I can't hear it. I already crossed it off my list. I didn't get the next one.
You don't want to sit here? Okay.
Evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm an attorney with law from Abadage &amp; Dewey here tonight representing the applicant Esmyra Construction, Inc. As you, I think you said, we do not have yet...
So where is it?
A DPRS memo that's been issued by staff. But we did want to somewhat informally provide a little bit of illustration with respect to this project scope. I did promise to Michelle and her team that I would be really quick because we don't have a memo, but I want to be thorough enough to at least provide the board with enough of an illustration so you can ask any preliminary questions that you might have. And if you could advance to the next slide, please. So just again, high-level background with respect to this site. This property is, it's actually a split-zone property. Majority of the site is within a BL1 district. Portion of the rear portion of the site is within an RL7. The vast majority of the main project improvements are going to be occurring within that business portion of the, of the district. Lot itself is quite large, it's over 100,000 square feet in size. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this is, this is off of Milbury Street. Technically, it's a corner lot. And as you could see, there are some 3D renderings that we did submit. One of the main sort of unique features of this site is the topography. And that, it is challenging with respect to the grade of this site. Basically, for those who are familiar with the property, the site really slopes upward from Milbury Street upward towards St. Louis Street, which is in the rear of the site. The project itself that we're proposing, it is a multi-family, low-rise. So it's three stories in height, and we're proposing 40 residential units. With respect to parking, the applicant is proposing a two-to-one ratio with respect to parking. So there would, there would be a total of 80 parking spaces. As you can see on this particular slide, Level 1, it shows the parking that will be podium-style, that is under, the first level under the buildings, atop of which there'll be three residential dwelling levels. And then in addition to that, there will also be surface-level parking in front of the building. So, and as, yeah, here's, here's the surface-level parking. So you can imagine underneath there is the garage, which will house a, I think it's 45 spaces within the garage, and then 35 spaces surface-level. So we, again, this is our first visit to the CBA. We've got a few other steps, few other boards, one of which is Conservation Commission. And then after that, Site Plan Review with the Planning Board. We are seeking a height variance with respect to this project. There is also technically a special permit because, again, going back to that split-lot zone, the portion, there are some components of the project that are going to be within that RL7, including the, some of the stormwater facilities as well as some retaining walls. Those trigger a special permit with respect to use. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. City staff?
I'm going to be even more brief, Mr. Chair. This is Michelle Smith in the planning division. Our office is still reviewing the plans. We're not really prepared to comment. The applicant wanted to open the hearing with the board, so I can't give you recommendations at this point. We're still in the process of reviewing. But as it relates to the relief, the applicant seeking relief for the height dimensional requirement as well as, and I'll just call out that I think there's a typo on our agenda that they're seeking the special permit to allow the use in the RL7 portion. We, it indicates BL1, but the use is allowed by right in the BL1. So it's the rear portion in the RL7 that they're seeking, and that's due to some of the improvements that are associated. If we go to the site plan, the improvements that are associated with the grading in the rear, and then as was alluded to, a retaining wall. If we could go to that plan, Amy Beth. Yep. Yes, there's a, can we go to the, isn't there a drainage, there's more improvements that are on that property? Yes. Okay, so, so regardless, there's quite a bit of improvement in the rear that's not in the side deck here. Again, another reason that we are still in the process of reviewing, but there's, there's these additional site improvements. And because of the fact that they're associated with the multi-family use, they themselves require the special permit to allow that in that lower-density zoning district. And then there are a number of reasons related to the parking layout itself that don't comply with the specific dimensional requirements for the parking layout that the applicant is also seeking to modify. So those are the three different purposes that they're in front of you for the relief. And I will leave my comments at that because that's all they are.
Okay. I'm going to ask, it seems like we have some people here from the public, just comment on it. So if you'd like to comment on it, knowing that this will, what is going to happen is we're going to have a continued conversation at the Zoning Board of Appeals about this application. But if you have any comments in this moment, please come forward, just state your name and city or town of residence. So, yep.
Yes, my, my name's Richard Anderson. I'm on one of the butters. I apologize because a lot was said that just went over my head.
It's okay. If you have any, if you have a question, I'm happy to answer it.
Oh, yes, I got a lot of questions.
Sure.
First of all, we're very happy to begin with, there was like seven of us here, and as this kept on going, it's down to only a few of us. We were very fortunate. They were very obliging, explaining things that I could understand. First of all, the property that we're speaking about prior to surge was only a single-family house in woodland. Everybody understood it's business zone, but the rest of it's residential, well-kept, single-family houses, working-class family. The last few years, developers, which I was part, had land, they put up expensive, nice homes. We did not expect, because this piece of property, if you visit the area, it is one steep bankin'. And this is private streets, and any type of rain, the city is, which is foolish because it's private, are there pushing the dirt back up. That just proves how steep of an incline. And the backup part of St. Louis is behind this property, this swamp. Beavers build up water problems. All the neighbors, it's still a neighborhood. People do talk and stop and help each other. The neighborhood is so quiet, and now to see something that's going to be body units, which the grade, and we'll be here the 15th to hear what Conservation says about the water situation in the grade. The property I owned, it butts it. It's not going to be appealing to see, even though they're keeping it to the business is owning. And for them to get a variance to get the height, it's one thing looking at deer and looking at trees, but seeing porches is no longer residential, in my opinion. I think the developer is well-meaning. He explained things, and the architect was excellent, saying what they've tried because we all, neighborhood, understand it is a business-zone property. But I couldn't understand what she meant, but we understand they have to have the height to have this amount of building. But we cannot expect them to go any beyond the business zone, which I got the understanding in, excuse me, they're not going to do that. And I don't understand the last one as far as what they talked about, the landscape, and which conversation they are going to try to make it very good. And I don't consider this person that, that we talked to will, will not keep his word. And I hope the city will not let anybody get away with anything after listening to what happened today. So there was quite a few people I knew that was going to go on Zoom. And this is the first time we were able to see what it looks like. I think depending on a lot, some of the people, if they were all here, our neighborhood would do a lot worse than this. But I wish they'd taken consideration of a neighborhood that's working-class people that keep their property excellent and not have something that's overwhelming. If the old 146 was still there, this building would never be there because they couldn't get out. But there is a lot of traffic still. There's wild problems and then ice problems. So take this all in consideration. And I know that we actually told, because a lot of the people that would be on Zoom are probably turned it off.
So let me answer some of your questions very quickly. So the part of the building itself, the building and the thing?
Yes.
Is in the BL1. But they're, to get the sort of grading, because it's going to have to sit lower than the thing?
There's going to be at least, I think he said, a 15-foot retaining wall.
Yes, so the, so the parts that are in the residential are the parts that they're doing to stabilize the slope and to create whatever they'll need to do to make sure that the water runoff, because you're right, it is, it is covered, that they treat that water. So the parts that are in the residential are not the building, it's the, it's the things to make it.
Right.
This is the first meeting?
Right.
So you will, so all the people who have missed, they will get all their opportunities to both voice it at the Conservation Commission, which they will really deal with the water, that's not technically our purview, and the Planning Board, where they will look at like, what does it look like? Does this fit into the neighborhood of what it looks like? So there's still going to be lots of chances for people who weren't able, I mean, look, I mean, we don't get paid either, we're all still here. So, you know, so like, everybody who hasn't had a say, I would also encourage, if you do talk to your neighbors, tell them to send letters. You saw here, we took that seriously, we read everyone. So if they aren't able to make whatever these meetings, let their voices heard in this process, we read them all. So that's the short answer is, the, this is not the only time we'll be discussing this. This is the initial conversation so that they could present to you all, present to us, so that we can begin that conversation.
I have to say, I did approach them with the pictures, they're going to send them. We're lucky to have a newly-elected John Fassold here, so we'll be able to keep in contact. And like I say, if they can take in consideration, we'll be here for the environmental. And I know this was proposed until they could get the water situation straightened out. So, you know, we, we want the proper use of the property and, and not too much of a
Sure.
disruptive, because we are hard-working, you know, well, you know, homeowners, these are rental properties.
Yep, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll continue to listen in this process, thank you. Other folks who are here for 1,103 Milbury Street? Yes, please come forward, just state your name and city or town of residence, please.
Hi, my name is Janice DiStefano. I am on St. Anthony Street. And I just have a question. Michelle was explaining, to the best of my knowledge, the... Michelle was explaining, to the best of my knowledge, the plans have not been completed yet, where this is just for the zoning variance. So there'll be more, more planning meetings on this. Okay? Because the pictures are beautiful, I was just wondering where those retaining walls are going to be placed, because that is a very steep hill. And that side street, St. Anthony, that lower half is dirt road, that is nothing but erosion. It's not two lanes, it's only one. The makeup of our neighborhood, we are private streets, majority of single-family homes, and that is going to more than double our neighborhood size. So it's, I'm not against it, it's just going to be a shock. And I just hope that it is completed in the right way because of that lower St. Anthony Street is a hot mess. The city's familiar with it as far as it washes out to Millbury Street all the time. There's no drainage, there's no nothing. And of course, we're worried about being on St. Anthony Street, that we have no sidewalks and it's a narrow street, that the amount of cars that that is going to increase into our neighborhood, none of us are prepared for, none of us. But I look forward to next meetings. Thank you.
So just to be, and just to be clear, the, we don't have the retaining walls and stuff, but there is going to be plans available to you all on that. So stay involved with Michelle on those pieces. I also have the same question you did. I sort of parked on, I think, St. Anthony's when I was going to the property to see the slope and other pieces in public. So all the questions you have, we also have as well. So I just want to name that.
Through, through the...
Actually, just one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, just, you just got to say it to the...
While she's coming up to the podium, I just want to say that we pulled up the full plans at. So I, I do think, you know, the purpose of opening this was to have public testimony. So for sort of deferring on that, I think that this meeting has had not the purpose it was intended. So I think where folks do have questions, if we could, because otherwise, we're going to be doing this at the next meeting. So we have the full plans that pulled up. Maybe we can go to the grading sheet, Amy Beth, and just show the...
So just to be, wait, if you go back to that one real quick, just to, oh, it doesn't matter, the next one too, with the grading is fine. So that, that dotted line at the top, that's the RL seven to the BL one. So if you see there, the building itself is in the BL one below that dotted line, and the retaining walls and the other grading, that's in the RL seven. So that's what they're talking about, about the different zones that they are. So the actual building itself is in the BL one below that dotted line. So just to answer your direct question.
No, I was just concerned, like, the...
You have to, yeah, because we're a public hearing, if we, if we listen to it, you have to say it into the microphone. So just very quickly, please, yes, just state your name again for the record, I want to make...
Again, my name is Janice, I'm from St. Anthony Street in Worcester. My thing with the lower half of St. Anthony Street, like you, like...
Yes, it's next to the street right next to you.
You say that, you visit properties before the meetings, which is fabulous. The grading, that street has already dropped, I think it's 12, 12 and 14 St. Anthony Street, when they just sold that, has already dropped, the street's already dropped four feet from the erosion, and that was in less than 10 years. And that's because when they were trying to sell the property, just like the water pipes and everything, it's, it's a hot mess.
So the city, the city's aware of it, and, and the other boards are actually better prepared to answer those questions than we are. Yep. Other folks who are here for 1103 Millbury Street? Keeping in mind that we don't even have a, this is not like an official, we're going to continue this conversation.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Through the chair, we do have a couple of people with their hands raised online.
Okay. So for those online, just remember that this is beginning conversation on this, this is not the final one. So considering the hour, I'll ask for brevity, but please do make your comments.
Tracy?
Hi. Hello?
Go ahead, yes, please.
Hi, my name is Tracy, St. Pierre, and I live on St. Louis Street. I just have a general question, and I'll keep it short. I was just wondering, when you talk about conservation and things like that, do they do like surveys about, about all the wildlife that live in that area and things like that? Is that something that's taken into consideration or...
That's, yeah, that's a great question. I had that question when I joined the Conservation Commission. The answer is no. I wish it did, it does not have that ability to take that into consideration. What gets taken into consideration is water flow and what water flows off the property. So it's really going to be focusing on the water. It won't, there's no regulations on any of the wildlife or so forth, relatively speaking. If it's in, if it's in the, if it's in, if there's something with the water, if there's, I guess there's some swamps on there. So the swamps, the water itself is covered, but the wildlife itself is generally speaking not covered.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Tess.
No problem.
Thank you.
Great question, yep.
And Nicole?
Hi, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Nicole Yang, and I'm a Worcester resident. I'm actually a property owner on St. Louis Street. And I'm just going to be very brief, I just want to say, yikes, the height variance kind of changes the character of the area. And it like overshadows the neighboring homes. I'm actually opposed to, to this, privacy loss for the Butters. And, you know, there's environmental concerns, flooding concerns, noise, light and privacy impacts. I think a high-density building introduces more late-night noise, increased lighting, you know, and just the quietness of the, the neighborhood. But I guess this was, you know, this is going to be ongoing. I guess we can continue to discuss this, but yikes, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Large.
Other folks online? Okay. I think what will be helpful for us for the next meeting would be a lighting plan, which I think we might, I couldn't remember if this project or the other one had it. But a lighting plan, and also I guess I'll say for folks, just a visual out, because I'm not sure it's rising up, it's not going to, you're not going to, it's not going to come up high enough for a lot of, for the folks, so that, because of the way it's sinking down and the, because of how high the slope is, it's, I do not believe it's going to be sort of cresting up over. But I guess some confirmations of that for folks at the next meeting, my, my sort of being out there, that's my impression of the property. And then the other piece I think would be helpful for, I know this board, is there is, you know, it's going to have to be clear-cut, there's a lot of changes in that neighborhood. But any sort of, any sort of planting plans or anything else that you have additionally to that will also be helpful, especially with an eye towards St. Louis Street and sort of those side things, the ways they keep it, so that the trees that are there that are pretty, that are obviously well-established, that enable sort of that feeling of, of cutting off that street from the building, I think those will also be helpful for the next meeting.
That's, we have, I think, the majority of those items, Mr. Chair, not all of it, obviously made it to the slide deck. Again, we're trying to be really brief.
Yeah, very brief, so I understand.
With respect to this presentation. You started to talk about the elevation, I think, and the topography, which I did want to just really briefly...
Yeah, please.
Explain that, because this does not jump out to the, a layperson just looking at this for the first time, in terms of really what is happening here with, with respect to the grades. But this slide here, you could see the, as I think it was pointed out before, you could see the zone line, the way the, the property line is split. So you had that dash line, again, this is the business zone, and then above that is the residential zone. This further dashed line all the way to the top on the screen, towards the top, that is the rear lot line. So you've got the rear lot line, and it's about 120 feet from that rear lot line to the rear wall of the proposed new building, so about 125 feet. In addition to that, the elevation, if you're going, if you're starting at the rear lot line, and this is the edge of some of these neighbors that, who have spoken, who live on St. Louis Street, that elevation compared to, if you go all the way down to the building, that the rear wall building, it is, it's around 40 feet. It's a significant drop in elevation. So basically, if you're standing, if you're a neighbor, standing on St. Louis Street, and you're looking down towards Millbury Street, the roof of this proposed new building is going to be almost at grade, plus it's going to be about 125 feet away. In addition to that, there's also woodland buffer between. Yes, there's going to be some tree clearing, because we have to accommodate some tiering of the grades in order to get to this backyard open space and to accommodate the retaining walls, as well as the stormwater facilities. But, but there will be a woodland buffer, and in addition to that, in speaking with the neighbors, one of the neighbors had requested fencing. So along, along the rear side of this, there will be opaque fencing, solid woodboard PVC fencing, in addition to provide a little bit more screening and soften that, to soften that buffer. So again, these visuals don't really do it justice. We have another rendering that Jesse's firm is producing to show that perspective of what I just described. Again, if you're on St. Louis Street, looking towards Millbury Street, to get that perspective. So I just wanted to point that out. The grades are, are challenged, but at the same time, the scope of the project, the height of the building, it's actually a little more, I think it takes a little bit more explanation.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make that point, so the board can understand.
So my instincts were right, it's just, it's not going to be high enough. That was what I thought when I saw it out there. Okay. I want the board to weigh in, just if there's anything else that you would like from the applicant before the next meeting. Board member Brahman, that wasn't listed, obviously.
No, I just, obviously, we're looking at very brief information. Leave from maximum height requirements doesn't say how many feet. To modify parking dimensional layouts, it doesn't say how many cars, how many feet.
Yeah, we don't have a memo.
So I think we just have to, just postpone this to...
We're definitely postponing it.
Continue it.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely continuing it. The question is, is there something you want for that continuance? Like, we don't have a memo.
Just the information we don't have.
The information we don't have is fine, yes. Board member Cortez.
Mr. Chair, I just will say, I think you mentioned the height's not mentioned? It is mentioned in terms of the relief, it's clearly mentioned.
It's not in our, it's not in our packet. It's, it's not in our packet.
Oh, on the agenda?
So just to be clear, we did get some, we did get some information to us in our, in the pre-packet, but not at the board meeting, because there's no official memo.
I apologize, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know what you're looking at.
So we don't have it here in front of you, but it's in the, it's in the Google folder. Board member Caponello?
Thank you.
Nothing else, board member Cortez? Keeping in mind, we'll get all this, yep. Board member Torcono, is there anything you'd like the applicant to know?
No comment.
Board member Sacco?
No comment.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion to continue. Are you going to be at the next meeting, the 20, what's the, what's the next meeting, the 29th?
The next meeting is December 29th, the following is January...
Yeah, would you like us to continue to the 29th?
We would.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
And then the constructive deadline will be January 13th. Can I get a motion on the continuance?
Through the chair, did I say January or December? I'm sorry.
You said December, I mean, you might have said June, but we know December 29th.
December 29th, yeah, I want to make sure, just for residents.
Okay, yep. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, board member Brahman?
Yes.
Board member Caponello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Okay, so the next time we'll hear it is December 29th, and there will be other meetings. So please be in touch, thank you very much for...
Excellent.
I actually really like when you come before us beforehand and give us this stuff, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Next up is, oh boy, I've lost my list. Next up is 561 Plantation Street. And if you have any questions, please just take it out in the hallway. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, Mark Bornstein, returning at the law from Prince Lebel here in Worcester, representing the applicant. This evening, I'm joined remotely by members of the development team, and I'll certainly introduce them if you have any questions for them. We've got a short video presentation, under two minutes. I think this is, we'll, we'll be able to do this one fairly quickly, but I defer to the board.
Go ahead.
Five minutes, let's do this five minutes.
I've lost the rest of the agenda.
Well, while Amy Beth is assembling it, just for the, for the board's edification, we are seeking a special permit for a school for profit. Specifically, it is a swimming school for live-to-swim school. The property at 561 Plantation Street is an approximately 2.32-acre lot occupied by a new 10,000-square-foot early childcare center building with an exterior 5,000-square-foot outdoor play area, a new surface parking facility with 45 parking spaces and related site improvements. The property is located in the Business Office BO 2.0 zoning district and the Water Resources Protection Overlay District. In 2024, the property owner obtained definitive site plan approval from the Planning Board and an order of conditions for the improvements constructed on the site and a 5,000-square-foot commercial building. The property owner now proposes to replace the 5,000-square-foot commercial building with a 7,700-square-foot swimming school building by adding a second story to the proposed building. Live-to-swim will operate the proposed swimming school, which will include a large indoor pool, reception and lounge area, changing rooms, a homework room, a party room for birthday gatherings, a viewing area for parents and visitors, and accessory office space. The proposed swimming school use is considered a school-for-profit use, which requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in the BO 2.0 zoning district. The proposed use will complement the existing early childcare center on the property by providing a cohesive development geared towards youth programming without any negative impacts to the neighborhood, natural environment, or significant increases in traffic.
Great. City staff?
Through the chair, Michelle Smith, in the Planning Division. The applicant is seeking a special permit to allow a for-profit school. You're familiar with nonprofit schools, they have lots of flexibility and provisions. Those that are for-profit, not so much. So they are seeking a special permit to allow it here in this Business Office District. This was previously approved in terms of the physical improvements to the site, which you can see through the aerial imagery, as well as from the video, is under development. So the site has a 10,000-square-foot daycare that's proposed to be located in the rear, which is the building you see featured there on the left. And then the foundation you see over on the right is where the proposed swim school is going to be located. Originally, that was just a one-story building, now it's going to be a two-story building. Doesn't change the parking requirements, so they don't need to add anything else or at this point come back in, in front of the Planning Board. However, they need a special permit to allow that use to occupy that space, so that is what they are in front of you for. We, they've all mentioned they also obtained the Conservation Commission approvals prior to any of this construction occurring. The, really the only comment that we have here is around the sort of synergy of the different uses on the site and their complementary nature, and considering potential for interconnection through the parking lot of pathways or walkways that feature folks coming from one side to the other, since it's a parking lot, and both are geared towards young children, providing that kind of dedicated space to move from the daycare over to the swim school if you're picking up your child and going over for swim lessons or what have you. So we're hoping that the applicant can comment on that in particular. Staff have outlined that as a condition of approval and showed a couple of potential options for depicting that through the parking lot, so maybe they can provide some, some commentary on that. Beyond this, the only thing I want to mention related to potential other uses is that by right, offices, banks, nursing homes, research labs, all of those types of uses are allowed in the zoning district, so we're requiring a special permit here for a school. Happy to answer specific questions, but I think that's really the crux of...
So through the chair, I think Amy Beth's going to pull up the site plan. So after we received the staff memo last week, thank you staff for the comment, we were able to identify a particular location for the pedestrian connection between the two buildings. We're still working through the surface treatments, that's why we haven't shared it with staff yet, but it will likely go across the norly portion of the parking lot, it'll be striped along the dumpster area and connect to the building. So staff's recommended condition of approval is acceptable, and we would also respectfully request the waiver recommended by staff. Thank you.
Is anybody here for 561 Plantation Street? Is anybody online? Just use the raise your hand function. In the meantime, I will, there is somebody, oh, great, okay, go ahead.
We'll go with Ben first.
I think he's just saying he's here.
I'm just the general contractor, I'll work it with Mark on this one.
Thanks, Ben.
And Nicole?
Yep, thanks, Beth, we're good.
Hi, this is Nicole Langley, I'm the site engineer with High Point on this. I just wanted to follow up on Mark, that we did look at the alternate connection walkway. We are proposing a different surface condition because we're tight on the post-imperious area on-site, but I think we do have a good connection.
Okay. So before us, as the zoning board, is just the fact that it's a school, it's not necessarily any of the other things actually regarding the development itself. That being said, place to learn how to swim, we actually need that in Worcester. So that's great, I think this would be great, the answer to the only question the city had, so I'm ready to vote yes on this. Board member Brahman?
I'm good with it.
Board member Caponello?
I'm in support of this application.
Board member Cortez?
Have no problem.
Have no problems.
Board member Torcono?
I'm good.
Board member Sacco?
No comment.
All right. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Sarah Second?
Sure move.
On the motion to close, board member Brahman?
Yes.
Board member Caponello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 561 Plantation Street?
I'd like to make a motion for 561 Plantation Street for a special permit to allow a school in a BO 2 zone.
Is there a second?
Sure move.
I'd like to also include the recommendations and waivers on pages three and four of five of the staff memo.
And, and the waivers. Did I, did you say that?
And the waiver.
Yeah. Is there a second? On the motion, board member Brahman? Board member Caponello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much. Next, next up is.
This is a four.
Yeah, next up is 70, 74 Winter Street. Go ahead.
Again, for the record, Mark Bornstein, Attorney at Law for Prince Lebel here in Worcester, representing the applicant. W. Loff's Realty Trust. This evening, I'm joined by representatives of the trust, Mark Resnick, who's a trustee, and Todd Resnick. Remotely, we have Molly Obendorf of Boll Engineering and David O'Sullivan, the architect of record for the project. We've got a short video presentation, and then we're happy to answer any questions that the board or staff may have. You gotta listen to music first, though. That's how you know it's working. Well, Amy Beth is working through that. We would respectfully request the waivers recommended by staff.
Thank you.
W. Loff's Realty Trust is excited to share an adaptive reuse project at the historic Haywood Boot and Shoe Company building located at 70 Winter Street. The property is an approximately 17,727 square foot lot and occupied by an existing approximately 87,000 square foot commercial building and a courtyard with four existing parking spaces. The existing building has been vacant and in disrepair for well over a decade. Earlier this year, the applicant obtained an A&R endorsement, which separated 70 Winter Street from the adjacent 85 Harding Street, which is located to the north. The property is located in the Business General BG 3 zoning district, Commercial Corridors Overlay District, Canal District Subarea, and Certain Sign Overlay Districts. The applicant is proposing to renovate the interior portions of the existing building to provide a total of 77 residential units, consisting of 14 studios, 52 one-bedroom units, and 11 two-bedroom units, in addition to three commercial units, an interior bike room, and recreational common areas. The proposed commercial spaces will be located at the corner of Winter Street and Harding Street. The applicant is proposing affordable units, including at least 5% at 60% AMI, in compliance with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. The applicant also plans to install roof decks over the existing courtyard and certain roof areas to provide outdoor recreation space. Given that a portion of the ground floor will have new residential units and the property is located in the CCOD, the project is subject to a five-foot front yard setback requirement. The applicant is seeking relief from this particular requirement. As previously stated, there's an existing parking area on site with four parking spaces. The parking area is accessed through the existing private street known as Burt Street. The applicant is proposing to continue the use of this parking area and the existing garage door along Burt Street. The applicant does not anticipate any impact to the use of Burt Street in connection with the project. Off-street parking for the proposed residential and commercial units will take place at 90 Harding Street, which is located across the street from the building, near the Worcester I Center. This adaptive reuse project will restore historic building back to productive use, provide new residential units to add to the city's housing stock, including affordable units at 60% AMI, and provide new commercial uses to add to the vibrancy of the Canal District.
Is that it? City staff?
All right. City staff, this is Amy Beth for the Planning Division. So we're talking about 70 through 74 Winter Street. As indicated, it is in a BG 3 Business General zoning district, as well as the Commercial Corridors Overlay District, the Canal District Subarea, the Downtown Sign Overlay District, and the Union Station Sign Overlay District. Presently, on premise is a vacant commercial building and a courtyard with four parking spaces. The applicant is seeking to renovate the existing building to create 77 residential units and three commercial units of approximately 2,262 square feet. They are seeking a variance for relief of five feet from the five-foot minimum front yard setback requirement in the CCOD Overlay District. The applicant is introducing ground floor residences within the CCOD, so there is the required five-foot setback for that. The structure was constructed approximately 1864 and is presently located on the property line. For by right development alternatives, the applicant could eliminate the ground floor residences and still renovate the building for the same number of residential units on the upper floors, with only commercial uses or amenity spaces for residents on the ground floor and would not need any relief from this board. For other and prior approvals, there have been many previous approvals for residential units and parking at this location that have never been constructed. Any improvements proposed for Burt Street, which is the private way that is to the rear of the building, is on the city's official map and may require prior approval from the planning board pursuant to the Chapter 12, Section 12. A building demolition delay waiver will be required from the Historical Commission for any alterations to the exterior of the building. A permit will be needed for any proposed improvements within the public right-of-way from the Department of Public Works in coordination with the Department of Transportation and Mobility. So staff had a number of comments and questions for this project. We're looking for the, the applicant is applying for historic tax credits for this project. So we are going to need, once all of their things are approved, through MHC, through the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and through the National Park Service, we're going to need to have the detail for their screening for the rooftop mechanicals. That was a.
So that's included in the.
We, the proposed floor plans reflect mixed-use building that has many corridors and common areas, which appear to be shared between residents and commercial tenants. So staff is recommending to restrict access to the residential areas to the commercial tenants and where needed, ensuring access is for employees only. The applicant has added additional interior doors to create a separation between the commercial spaces and the residential common space within the building, but on that ground floor, to the right of the stairs where the mailroom is, there appears to remain unrestricted access, and I can bring up that plan once we're, once I'm done with the talking. So we just want to make sure that that corridor is secure or slash, you know, what the plan is for that corridor. The applicant has indicated four commercial spaces on the ground floor and first floor, and, but in their plan, they should clarify the uses of those spaces. There's still some conversation about what those uses will be. The applicant estimates that there will be 85 bicycles that will fit in the bike storage room, so the room will primarily be for resident use, but with access for commercial tenant employees as needed. And there'll also be bicycle racks on Harding Street for customer use. So staff notes that the alterations to the public right-of-way will require approval from DPW in coordination with DTM. The applicant should address how the four spaces under the building and the garage will be managed. Staff recommends these spaces be restricted to use by residents of the building and not for use by guests or commercial tenants. Staff would like to see decorative and ornamental fencing in the alley slash right-of-way to the east of the building along Winter Street, between this building and 82 Winter Street, instead of the existing chain link fencing. Staff notes that the proposed transformer shown in Burt Street in the right-of-way, if at grade, likely requires approval from the planning board. And they should, the applicant should clarify the extent of the improvements to propose Burt Street. So in conversation with the applicant and through our conditions of approval, we're adding to Condition 1A at the end of that condition, as I stated, to the extent permitted by the Massachusetts Historical Commission and National Park Service for those approvals. And then through conversation with the Zoning and Land Use Coordinator in Inspeccional Services, Condition 1D, we are going to only say that the applicant will need to provide dimensions for the drive aisle. The parking spaces will not need to be altered in any way. They, the zoning and land use coordinator deemed that a safe.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood your comment, so that's good.
Yep. Safe circulation.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Public comment?
Oh, sorry.
Your turn.
Your letter? We have it right here.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Are you Ralph Spoke, are you Ralph Spoke?
That's me, yep.
Okay. Go ahead. Yep, we got it beforehand, too.
My name is, I go by Rick. It's Ralph Spoke. I live in Holden, and I own the property at 75 Temple Street. Have you read this? I don't want to be redundant.
Yes. I, we got it beforehand. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The biggest thing that I am concerned about is my building. Can you blow that up? Is it possible to blow the corner up there? Let's make it a little, the bottom of Burt Street. There we go. Burt Street South, which is the, right there where the pointer is, and that is, can be a really treacherous area. That's been a service area for over 100 years. The corner of my building is a shaved two-decker, which was built in 1885. And then, of course, the Haywood Building was 18, I think, 60s or 70s. And that's been a service road ever since. It's unimproved. When I first moved into that building, I, I tried to have it, oh, I asked if it was, why it wasn't being plowed, and the city told me it was a private street. So a couple of years later, I tried to get it, I tried to pave it myself because I had an auto reconditioner who had to drive through the dirty, rutted road, and then they told me I couldn't pave it. I said, I thought it was a private street. And he said, no, it's a semi-private street. Okay. So then we had some issues. I've owned this probably, I've been there almost 40 years. And then, right after that, they changed the status again to a paper street because people were putting dumpsters there, and they said, well, what is a paper street? Well, they said, you control the middle half of the road to your building, and the Haywood Building would have your, okay, that's fine. So that's where it's been for about 25 years. Everybody gets along really well there. My biggest concern right now is, and I did some research on the ADA ramifications of the parking space, they wanted to detail about how, and they're very specific about the size, the length, the width, the access, and one of the things that jumped out at me was access to a four-foot sidewalk. My concern is if somebody is going to put a four-foot sidewalk in there, it's going to just destroy the ability to use that. That roadway there, in the winter, when the first ice comes, it's three, four inches of ice until the spring, and it can be treacherous. Everybody gets along pretty well there. You know, we all work, we work to respect each other's and that we have to do business. But my tenant in the back, his only access egress is through the overhead door. It's in the, the yellow beige building, part of the building. So my concern, other than what I've said here, is that I don't want to have to disrupt ability to do business there. You know, I've seen all the false starts there, and I want to see that Haywood Building, you know, turn into something good for the developer, for myself, you know, for the city of Worcester, but it's going to be done respectfully with everybody else. So I guess that's it. I'll be brief.
That was perfect, and thank you for sticking around for your comment. I appreciate it.
I was going to say, you know, when I learned public speak, and they said, you've got to make your point in two minutes before you lose them. Maybe you should have had me first.
I wish we did.
Yes.
Can we get the answered questions? So I think the questions I'm hearing are to, and if we could let the applicant behind you just answer your questions. So it sounds like the question you have is both, what's happening to the street in terms of, is there going to be any pavement or disruption to it?
The access, I'm sorry.
The, so just, my understanding is that.
The access to the proposed handicap parking is.
Yeah.
Overhead door directly across from that corner, which is narrow.
Right. So the, so the question is, so there's not any plans to put sidewalk or any sort of changes to it? And, and the other question I would have, based on the, on your comment, is also like, is there going to be disruption? Is it going to be able for people to access it while there's, while there, is there a plan to make sure that that's accessible for other people who access it while you're doing the changes to the building internally? Like, also making sure there's a plan to make, that it's going to continue to be accessible for people who need to access it to access their property?
So from, so to your point, there's no proposed modifications to Burt Street. The proposed transformer, we're going to talk to staff about that comment regarding planning board approval, but that is on an existing pad in Burt Street or adjacent to the site. So we're not proposing any new pads. It's an existing pad, transformer on that pad. We're not proposing any new garage doors. The garage door is existing. We're going to use that existing door. The parking spaces are already existing. They're just going to be striped in the courtyard.
So, so there's not going to be, because it's internal, there's no other need for, for any sort of changes to the outside, to the, to the, for any accessibility? So everything's internal? So there's no changes to the street happening, and there shouldn't be any blockages to the street?
Okay, but my original point, what jumps out at me is the ADA standards. They, they did mention access to a sidewalk.
So the sidewalk is in the front. The access to any sidewalk they'd need, the, any ADA requirements are getting met either from the sidewalk that's existing in the front or to the fact that it's internal to the building?
Yep. We're not proposing any sidewalks on Burt Street. We're not proposing, I mean, aside from the transformer area, there's nothing being proposed.
So all the changes are to the, are to, are already.
Interior.
Interior. They're not changes to the exterior.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's the plan. If they do anything else, they'd have to come, they'd get in trouble.
Yeah. Well, that's, those are the plans that we're filing.
Yes. So all the changes are internal, not external.
Todd, he reached out to me after he got the letter.
Yep. So in this case, it's not applicable because of the.
That we're going to be, you know, neighbors and stuff, so.
Yep. It should, it should be, because it, because of the nature of it, it's internal, not external.
Go Worcester.
Great.
Yeah. Through the chair, just to clarify to you, if, if any improvements are proposed to Burt Street, including by Anabata, there's a petition that is required to the planning board to review what's proposed in terms of grading, drainage, or surfacing. So if you're changing the surfacing, you know, you can fill in a pothole, but once you start changing the condition of the road in terms of the surface, I think the, Anabata referred to paving and the status of the way, it's a private way on the city's official map. So if they're interested in doing that, there's a process through the planning board called Chapter 12, Section 12, that anyone would need to go through, the applicant or Anabata.
Yep. So no changes, is the answer.
you start changing the condition of the road in terms of the surface, I think the... Anabata referred to paving and the status of the way. It's a private way on the city's official map, so if they're interested in doing that, there's a process through the planning board called Chapter 12, Section 12, that anyone would need to go through, the applicant or Anabata.
Yep. So no changes is the answer. All right. Anybody else here online?
Through the chair.
Thank you for sticking around.
Through the chair, I just wanted to point out, in my comments, when I talked about the hallway where the door...
Oh, yes. If you could just answer the question about the hallway and what's happening?
So I believe we made some modifications. I know David O'Sullivan, the architect, should be on. He can probably speak to it more, but before he does, I just want to note, I think there was a question from staff regarding the uses of the commercial spaces. So there will be three commercial spaces. The... Where the cursor is right there, that commercial space... Nope, sorry. Go plan north. Yep. It was determined that some of the outdoor recreational spaces, because they're dedicated to individual units, don't count towards our recreational space requirement. Therefore, a portion of that space will become commercial... Excuse me, will be recreational to meet the 10% recreational requirement. So there will be three commercial units. And I don't know if we have David, if he could speak to the internal door question.
David, go ahead.
All right, yes. We did...
Thank you.
This is David O'Sullivan from O'Sullivan Architects. I thought we had put the door in. We had anticipated a door right next to the mailroom wall between that and the staircase down in there. We did it everywhere else, and I guess we missed that one on the plan. It would be kind of at the... Down at the lobby, going down to lobby, right there at the mailroom wall would just extend over with a door to run to the stairwell wall, actually up and down versus sideways. Yeah, right in there. Yeah, I didn't real... I thought we had one in there, and it didn't get put on the plan. On a markup, but didn't make it.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I would just note that we've been very deliberate in terms of keeping all of the commercial activity in kind of one area. So if someone were to come into the ground floor unit, they wanted to go upstairs, they could go to the different respective units.
And in terms of the parking spots, do you have a plan for what's going to be those four spots?
Yes, all of the required off-street park... Well, those particular parking spaces, they will be residential tenants.
Okay.
So they will be residential tenants.
That's the answer. Okay. Anybody else here for 7074 Winter Street? And again, thank you. Okay. I don't have anything else. I think this is straightforward. We're asking for five feet. That's it. That's all that's required from us on this. So that's pretty straightforward for me. It's a pretty small request. So I'm a yes. Board member Braumoff?
Five feet is good by me.
Board member Cappanello?
I'll say it.
Board member Cortez?
Well, detailed presentation, I have no problems.
Board member Torcono?
I'm good.
And board member Sacco?
No comment.
Okay. In that case, I'll take a motion to close.
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to close, board member Braumoff?
Yes.
Board member Cappanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 7074 Winter Street?
I'd like to make a motion on 7074 Winter Street for a variance for relief of five feet from the five-foot minimum front yard setback requirement for the CCOD overlay district, including the recommendations and waivers on pages three and four of seven of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, board member Braumoff?
My vote is yes.
Board member Cappanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up and last is 73 Wall Street.
Hi.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Jay Galant. I'm the architect for this project. The owners representing O&amp;G Realty are also participating remotely. And, excuse me, so this is... This property is at the corner of Norfolk Street and Wall Street, and it's a very oddly-shaped lot, and that's basically why we're here. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a hearing with the planning board, received conditional approval. It's a very steeply sloped site. The area that we're developing is the triangular portion on the north part of the property near the intersection. There is another part of the parcel, kind of on the south there, that looks like it could work, but it doesn't. It's very narrow, and because of the steep slopes, that's where we had to put our drainage structures. So that... Basically, that entire area is going to take the... There are going to be some Caltech units there that'll... Yeah, there we go. You see it in that... On that plan. So we're proposing... Well, that's a... If you could go to the next page, please. So that's our proposed duplex is right in the middle, as you can see, and then it slopes to down and to the left in this plan, and that's where our drainage area is going to be. It's a pretty straightforward building design, but it's a very unique property. And essentially, why we're here is because we need relief from the... What's been determined, the rear yard setback which faces Norfolk Street at the top of the page here. So the front of the building will face Wall Street, very appropriately designed for the site. It's a two-story residential building. It'll look like a lot of the other neighborhood buildings. And in the back, where we're facing Norfolk Street, it's... There's a retaining wall there. Next page shows like the rear elevation, and the next page shows like a three...
That's it.
Three D... Oh, okay. So back to the elevations, I suppose. So essentially, it's going to be a... It's going to look fine from Norfolk Street. And there's a retaining wall that you can sort of see in this plan that separates Norfolk Street from the property, and there's a sidewalk there. It really won't be very noticeable at all. Our hardship is essentially the... We have two. It's the slope of the property and the shape of the lot. There's really nothing else we could have done here. We could have created a single-family residence, which wouldn't really worked in the neighborhood. It's all multifamily, and the building fits very well on the site. And there were... In the staff memo, there were a couple of waivers that we'd like to request, and if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. City staff?
Through the chair, this is Amy Beth Leith for the city. So 73 Wall Street is in the RG5 zoning district. Presently, it is a vacant lot, and the applicant is seeking to construct a single-family semi-detached dwelling. For Lot 1, they are looking for a variance for relief of 6.7 feet from the 15-foot rear yard, minimum rear yard setback. The applicant proposes a rear yard setback of 8.3 feet. And for Lot 2, the relief is for 6.9 feet from the 15-foot minimum rear yard setback for a single-family detached dwelling. The applicant is proposing on Lot 2 a rear yard setback of 8.1 feet. So for other approvals, in January... On January 29th of 2020, an A&R was signed to split the original lot into two lots. And Parcel 2A was identified as a non-buildable lot, and the applicant will be required to file another A&R plan to remove this restriction and to reflect the configured news... Or reconfigured or new zero lot line. And on November 19th, 2025, as stated, the planning board granted site plan approval for this proposed project. So for by right developments, a similar structure could be proposed that meets the 15-foot rear yard setback requirement, but it would be unlikely. The subject site is a corner lot at the intersection of Norfolk Street and Wall Street. The applicant is proposing to orient the building toward Wall Street to provide a driveway connection to Wall Street, and the site, as described, slopes down from the frontage on Wall Street to the less elevated frontage on Norfolk Street. That's all I have.
Is anybody online? Since clearly no one's here. I'll go forward, and if anybody raises their hand, that's fine. This is the definition of needing a variance based on the sort of configuration of it. This is pretty straightforward. I'd rather have two than one here, and it is definitely in line with neighborhood, so I'm ready to say yes. Board member Braumoff?
I have nothing to add on this.
Board member Cappanello?
Do you request the waivers on page three of five? Oh, you did already. I missed it. Sorry.
Is that it? Board member Cortez?
Very innovative to use that difficult lot.
Yeah. Board member Torcono?
I'm good.
Board member Sacco?
No concerns.
Good to come at the end of the meeting. I'll take a motion to close.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, wait, yes, go ahead.
We did have a hand raised. I don't know...
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
Peter, I don't know if you did want to speak. I'm going to ask you to unmute if you do.
No, I'm just one of the owners and thought I'd add if anybody had any questions specifically for me. Otherwise, I'm fine. Thank you.
I mean, putting a Caltech on this property is very impressive, so I'm above and beyond. Is there a motion to close?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
So move.
On the motion to close, board member Braumoff?
Yes.
Board member Cappanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono? Board member Torcono?
Yes.
Board... Is there... My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 73 Wall Street?
I'd like to make a motion for 73 Wall Street on Lot 1 for a variance for relief of 6.7 feet from the 15-foot minimum rear yard setback requirement for a single-family semi-detached dwelling in an RG5 zone, and on Lot 2 for a variance for relief of 6.9 feet from the 15-foot minimum rear yard setback requirement for a single-family semi-detached dwelling in an RG5 zone, including the recommendations and waivers on page three of five of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
So move.
On the motion, board member Braumoff?
Yes.
Board member Cappanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much. All right. I did not get a chance to read the minutes. Does... Has... Do we have both of those in there? I'm sorry.
They're in here.
Okay.